Team will come to water, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America, one nation, under God, in this law, liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is approval of minutes on April 23rd, 2019. Your motion?
Second.
The movement seconded, all those are done?
Aye.
Aye, three, zero. Approval of the warrant?
So.
Second.
Do we have to do anything?
No, because he doesn't have majority or stand.
All right. Movement seconded. Any question, comment, or none, all those are done?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
Stand. So, two, zero, one. Public participation, is there anyone here to talk about anything that is not on the agenda? Come on up. Hi, would you introduce yourself and tell us why you're here?
Hi, my name's Liz DeTucci, I'm a parent of a kindergartner and a second grader at Fox Hill.
My name's Janalynski, I have a second grader at Fox Hill, two incoming kindergarteners, and also a student at preschool.
So, we've had some email back and forth with Principal Rosenblatt and Dr. Conti about class sizes, and I know I included the school committee on it as well, but I just wanted to give you my perspective, because I'm here, I mean, I am totally here not to complain, I'm a fan, I'm a huge fan of Fox Hill. Teachers are amazing, and we've had a really great experience with the principal this year, he's extremely present, so it's been really good. So I'm here just seeing if we can fix a problem that I think is pretty, I think there's a short-term problem with students per classroom, but I think based on what I'm starting to see data from you guys, that it's going to continue this way. So I'm kind of, I mean, I definitely know there needs to be a longer-term plan, but I am very concerned, short-term, about what's going on now. So here's, just here's some data. So, my current second grader at Fox Hill, so when she was in kindergarten, there were seventeen students, including her, in her class. In first grade, there were also, it started seventeen and then it became sixteen, because one moved. She is now in second grade, and there are twenty-two students in her classroom now. I've traded emails with Dr. Conti, and when you guys give me your projections, the number looks a little smaller, so you guys have it as nineteen point seven five as the average class size, but I think the difference is, because, I mean, I volunteer in the class, and there's twenty-two kids in the classroom, they're shoved in there. So it does include lab students, which I think should be included, I think it's great to have everybody in the classroom, and I think those numbers should be included when we talk about the class size. So my ask, to be really specific, is, and let me give more background, so when these students moved from first to second grade, very quietly, a classroom was reduced. So we didn't, as parents, we didn't find out about this until everybody was seeing what teacher you had for next year, and we realized there were only four classrooms, not five. So possibly a communication issue from the former people in charge of Fox Hill, I'm not here to place blame or figure it out, it's just, it happened really quietly. So it's not consistent across elementary schools, because what I understand is that, for example, Francis Wyman, you don't reduce a classroom until these children go to third grade. So currently, those second graders still have their additional classroom, and there's discussion to remove it next year when they go to third grade. I'm here to also say I support the Francis Wyman parents, and I believe to keep classroom sizes small, that that classroom should remain at that school as well. So my specific ask is that you add back in that classroom and teacher to the current Fox Hill second grade students as they go to third, and that that remains with them through their elementary school, so that they don't bloom back up to twenty-two or more students. And then if I start to look at the numbers and projections, so my current kindergartner started the year with nineteen students, and one student moved, so they're down to eighteen. However, if, if the same thing happens to that grade, that grade's even bigger, if the same thing happens to that grade at Fox Hill, if you remove the classroom at second grade, they're going to go up to twenty-two students without any additional students who come in and out of the classroom. So it's gonna go, I mean, I'm very used to in Burlington, hearing from you guys that small classroom sizes are important, I mean, unless we're going to talk about a security thing, I think that's one of the most important things to prioritize when we look at budgets, and so that's my ask. I know Dr. Conti mentioned Fox Hill is looking at maybe an additional web guidance counselor and an additional homeroom teacher, but I've also heard that would go to fifth grade. So I would like to see this be figured out within the budget, above and beyond, I don't want to see anybody else lose out or reduce to, you know, accommodate these kids going to third, but I just think, I'm starting to become concerned, and so I just wanted to come here to be part of the solution.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
Sure, I, we've actually, I think communicated a lot, so I printed, I left them at your desk, and Mr. DeTucci, I'm just, these are black and white, so it might be a little bit hard to read, but I asked Robin Milliano, our student information person, just to print what's latest, and I think we're probably going to have the same conversation, I love the lab stuff later.
Does anyone else have anything to say on this issue?
My concerns are the same as Liz's, and, you know, I just, part of the reason why my family decided to move to Burlington several years ago, when my daughter was entering kindergarten, was because of the reputations of the schools and the small class sizes, so I was very disappointed to hear that one of the classes was cut, and that that tends to be something that does happen as kids are in second, third grade, or they move on. With three more kids about to come through the school system, I'm hoping that, you know, that can change, so that the classes can stay under twenty for all of my kids that still have school to attend.
That's certainly our goal. We have limited space, and we have limited funding for teachers, but I think Dr. Conti works pretty hard to do the best he can, so, you want to comment, or?
No, I can, I can certainly comment, I'm not going to disagree with the sentiment, I think we are starting to see class sizes get a little larger, we have some classes that have bulges that can't control when families are happening, and I just want to make sure that we sort of in general say, I think we have very good class sizes across the district, we just have some grades where we're starting to see us creep over twenty. That's one factor, but as you all know, we're also running out of classrooms, so at some point, we may not be able to add teachers then without displacing other specials or things like that, and I know the school committee knows that. So my understanding with Fox Hill, and we can talk about any school you want, obviously they, we have a bulge at grade three at Francis Wyman.
So this is next year, excuse me?
This is, yeah, I moved everyone up a year, so this is a cohort, so it wouldn't be, Mr. DeTucci, I think you said your daughter's currently in second?
I have a kindergartner and a second grader, the two big ones.
Right, right now, correct?
Correct.
So what you're looking at would be that second grade, that second grade up at third grade?
Yep.
So, and so we moved anyone up. So the incoming K classes are usually the most unpredictable, that's why we try to get everyone registered early, and there's always some discrepancy between who's identified from the town through Aspen, and who's actually registered, that's why you see the difference between Aspen is our student management system, and true is who's actually come in and physically registered. The, last year, we had five in K, and we're taking that fifth up, so the fifth section is following the students from K to one. And then we had, I believe, three in five, right? There's only three fifth grade teachers this year, because there's a class of fifty that's moving up, it's a small fifth grade, and we're going to put a four. So again, Fox Hill is going to go from twenty-four, I'm saying homeroom teachers, classroom teachers, to twenty-five next year. What you were saying is you would also like there to be, because there were five in, currently in grade two, is that?
They were, they had five classrooms when they, for kindergarten, and one, and then you cut it.
From one to two.
From five to four?
Yes.
A year ago.
A year ago. So then, so then we're seeing, you're seeing the twenty and twenty-one in grade three for next year, and your concern is we're over twenty plus, when the lab students are included, you said a classroom can then have twenty-two?
My child's class is twenty-two.
Is twenty-two?
Yep.
So I'm saying, I think that would sort of bear out, I'm looking at averages, I'm not sure where every student is assigned, so there may be a class of nineteen and a class of, and a class of twenty-two.
So if it's budget and space, that's the two issues, right?
Right.
So, I mean, if it's budget, I see it as a prioritization issue. For me, this is, again, like other than security of the school, this is the top priority from my perspective. I don't do your job, I don't know everything, but, you know, I know the budget was just approved last night, but I see this as something where, you know, money should be shifted to accommodate this. And then if it's a space issue, which I totally get, because you're out of classrooms at Fox Hill, but look into renting, you know, additional portables or something, because, I mean, this, you're not going to, if you need to build a building, or if you need to do something capital, you're not going to have a solution to that in the next, what, five, six years? But, I mean, this is a problem now, and these grades are big now, and I don't know what, you know, the younger kids look like, but what are we doing now? And I mean, I've heard this from other parents and teachers.
I think what we have to do is keep going on our planning for next year, and see what, what works out. I totally understand your concern, anything over twenty bothers me too, although contractually, we have enough a limit of, I believe it's twenty-six, is that right, Diana?
I think it's about right.
About twenty-six?
We have one.
So these class sizes, even though they seem large to you based on our history, they're still not too bad, but we get it, and we really don't want them over eighteen. So as the, as the time goes on in the next month or two, I think Dr. Conti and the principal at Fox Hill will figure out the best they can do, and, um...
Yeah, I mean, there's only a month left until basically report cards, things are finalized.
And we don't know if kids are going to move in over the summer, I mean, that, that has happened in the past, and that's caused dramatic changes as well. You know, kids could move out, and the size would be smaller, kids could move in, and we, you know, we'd have to go to town meeting and say we need another teacher.
What is, I mean, I'm sorry to harp on it, but, because I feel passionately about it, but is there a way to reprioritize the way you've done the budget in order to accommodate this?
Sure, but again, that might mean we don't, we put off the guidance council for a year, and we put another classroom teacher in, so we could trade the salary. It could be that we're going from, well, that's the reprioritization, so it could be that we go from five, when we went from four K, five Ks to four Ks next year, we have an instructional assistant that's attached to the K, that maybe we move the instructional assistant to grade three to sort of assist with the class of twenty-two, but at some point, it's just a matter of bodies in the room. So again, David and I can have those type of conversations. If we add a teacher at Fox Hill, then we're really going to need to add a teacher at Francis Wyman as well. So we would need to go from, again, ninety-six, I'm saying sort of homeroom classroom teachers, there's many more teachers in the building, district-wide, we would probably need to go to ninety-eight. Again, we have four additional teaching positions in the budget, and again, we could rethink those four positions, but that's, you know, that's where we're at. We could also, again, we have three currently grade five at Fox Hill, and we could have classes of, larger classes at grade five, and that section could be moved down to grade three. So again, usually, we try to get as many sort of teachers in the budget as we can, and then there's a lot of conversations at the school, depending on the class, and sort of what's going on with the personality. So we do have some options, I don't think we're without options, but it's rarely just an additive option. So that's going to require additional funding or cuts somewhere else, just because we're pretty tightly budgeted now. And, and again, but I'm not arguing your point, I think class sizes are sort of getting up, I'd be more comfortable if they were under twenty, I think that, that certainly helps. I believe in the inclusion that we're trying to make happen as well, I don't think anyone's saying anything negative about that, and I think our teachers at Fox Hill are great and going to do a great job with the classes that we provide them. So I'm not trying to give you a definitive answer tonight, but I can certainly look at grade three at Fox Hill, because I think I'm just going to highlight that, it looks like we're okay everywhere else. I do believe we could create a classroom space if we had to, I spoke to David about that, we might have to displace some people, so it's not there, but I just don't think we can address grade three at Fox Hill without looking at grade three at Francis Wyman.
I just, I just want to follow up on the, on the space issue. In the past, we have gone the portable route, obviously, if you've been in town, you know that, but that's not an easy thing to do either, that certainly, you can't just call up and order a couple of portables, it's a, that's a process, so these types of things, these issues on a short-term basis are difficult to solve. Long-term, they're a little bit easier when you can prepare for them. If, because you're right, if a new building, if we're four or five years old, even if we get the portals tomorrow or now, so, and we've started talking about potentially having to do something in the interim, and looking into that. And if that's a, you know, if they're expensive, and, you know, money, money's an issue, so that's something we'd have to look at, but if portables is a short-term solution, the likelihood of having those in place by fall is a nil, but we could certainly, if that's a short-term route that we're going to have to go until we get new buildings in place, we'll have, we'd have to have those discussions and maybe get something in place for next year. So it's such an inexact science, people move in, people move out, you know, you looked down this list here, there are some, some classes that are fifteen and sixteen, and others are twenty-one and twenty. It's, you know, you never know who's going to move into what street, what district they're going to be in, and what grades their kids are going to be in, and so you do the best you can, but it's, it's never, well, they're fourteen, so we won't be fourteen, there's just a lot that goes into it. So as Dr. Conti says, we're aware of the situation, and we're doing the best we can to deal with it as best we can. That doesn't mean that come September, everybody's going to be thrilled with, with their situations. You know, if we, if we brought Peter to pay Paul, then Peter's mad, so, you know.
Yeah, and I mean, I heard you say something about fifth grade, I wouldn't want to see them, their classroom size go up either, but it sounds like there's, so in terms of next steps, it sounds like you're talking to Principal Rosenblatt, and we'll hear back from you, and like what sort of timeframe?
Um, yeah, because, again, I would, in my head, and I guess looking at, you know, I think what's best practice is, if this were a conversation between sort of K two, three, five, I would rather have the twenty-twenty-one with fifth graders than I would with first graders. So again, I think there's some aspects of Sophie's Choice to this, but I do want to make sure that I'm framing that some, in many places, twenty-one and twenty-two are fantastic, and again, I don't want to say that that's not what people here are used to, and I'm, again, I don't want to argue that point, but it may be something that we look at where, again, we can look at the, the grade, I think the, what you have in front of you is just honestly a model that we are going through for budgeting purposes, because I have to make sure we can pay for the teachers that we have on staff. So this is one potential model, we can certainly look to do some shifting around, but if they're sort of, if there's a real priority put to the class sizes that you're seeking, it's typically with the younger, the younger grades, is what I would say, as practice in general. The budget was approved, what, last night, I think we still have the rest of town meeting to get through, I'm assuming the next couple of weeks, this is going to have to get resolved, because we're going to start posting and moving people around, and so we can, I don't think it's going to be much longer than that.
Okay, and then how do we, like, medium term, how do we ensure that this is a topic for your discussions, to make sure that when the budgeting process starts, like if you do need space or portable classrooms for, and ask for teachers, how do we, just as people coming here for public participation, how do we ensure that that stays on your radar?
Pay attention in the fall, when we get into the guideline setting.
And that's...
Go ahead.
...is one of the points that, you know, it's appreciative to have not just the emails, but to have you come to the meeting, because we do have the Ways and Means Board here, and as we move forward, and we, we look to next fall's budget, if we're asking for another teacher, we get a lot of pushback. Your, your numbers are fantastic, but it's different when you're looking at numbers versus standing in the classroom, teaching a first grader, the difference between the letter P and the letter D. You know, having less children, as you're teaching them to write at those lower grades, is just huge, so, you know, Dr. Conti's point, I also favor if we need to shuffle around twenty-two, twenty-one at a fifth grade level, is a little more manageable than having twenty-two, twenty-one at that for a second grade level, when they're really, you know, more needy and need more direct instruction, so, but this coming here is, is excellent, because again, we have the Ways and Means, it's televised, when we go to the town selectman and town administrator, and we're trying to educate, you know, it helps that they understand what the, the parents are seeing also, and what, what your priorities are too, so.
So thank you for bringing your concerns to us, I'm sure you'll keep the communication up with Dr. Conti, and we'll see where this goes in the next few weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public participation on a topic not on the agenda? No? Okay, moving on. The next item on our agenda, information and reports, student representative.
Hi, everyone, hope you guys are having a great day in this rainy weather. So this week is our last week as interns on our intern trip, which is really sad, because I've gotten to know many of the teachers and lab students that I've worked with, and I think everyone on the intern trip has gotten a lot of experience out of this wonderful opportunity that we've been given. Also, in our student government, we have elected a new SCAB member, and his name is Arya Nabraj, he wasn't able to be here today because he had an AP test tomorrow, and he has also been elected on our student council and the state leadership, which I was also a part of, so he will be representing Burlington and Malden at DUCY next year.
Agreed.
And then also, in other news, we had our prom last Friday, and it was actually a very wonderful experience, and everyone loved everything about it, the food, the venue, the DJ, a lot of dancing.
What was the venue?
The venue was Doubletree in Danvers, it's the Coco Keys one, so.
Fern crock.
Oh.
It was called the Fern Crock.
The old Fern.
The old Fern.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Anyone have any, any comments or questions?
Will you be joining us at your out-of-town meeting in June, or?
Well, it may.
Or will you?
Oh, okay.
I'm just questioning the priorities of our new SCAB member. Good to be here.
AP test.
AP test, which one is it, do you know?
AP World.
All right.
That would be tell. Anything but world is.
I just wanted to say thank you for all of your time, and I really liked being a part of this, for...
You've been a delight, you really have.
Thank you.
Say hi to your brother, Paul.
I will.
Any subcommittee reports? No? Moving on, Ways and Means. Not a thing.
Actually, I do have one subcommittee report from the REC. You, I think that you had forwarded an email from a couple of Francis Wyman parents about the condition of the playground down there. And our REC commissioner, Kevin Sullivan, got down at the playground with the two parents and with Brendan Egan, and identified areas that needed attention, and the REC maintenance staff will do what they can with the items that they identified, but there were some other things that, and I haven't seen them, but Kevin was telling me about them, that might need further attention, either removing them or replacing them, or things to that effect, which, when you get to that point, funding becomes an issue as well. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that the REC is looking into it, there are some short-term things that they're going to do with their staff, there might be some longer-term things that they might want to talk to us about. This playground down there is the one that was essentially purchased through a group of parents, probably fifteen years ago now.
I understand.
Maybe even Magr, so it's, it's getting to the point where it needs some attention, and I think the REC is obviously willing to do what they can, they might be looking to work with us on something for this one.
Madam Chair, I'm Bob, attended that meeting, so I think you heard directly from the parents and Brendan, so we're going to probably...
Anything to add, Bobby?
Not really to add, but really just to confirm what Tom said, so, because some of the conditions of the sandbox, the gazebo and so forth are fifteen years old, I mean, our main is department, and the REC department has done some upkeep to them, but we are looking at, you know, potential where that, a time where we kind of either need to replace them or do something more than just sand and paint them. Some of the other conditions that we're talking about is the slide bits in place, and there's a hill going down to the playground that has bushes in them, that has some erosion just because of the water flow, things like that. So I mean, again, maybe replacing or sanding some wood is not a big deal, but some of the erosion issues and so forth are the bigger ones, and we talked about that, we couldn't possibly need funding for.
Is it a lot of money, or is it something that could be managed between the REC and the school department?
Yeah, it's probably something that could be managed between the school department, but I think it's more of just, you know, facilitating a plan as to what we want to happen, whether we're going to plant your bushes and plants there, or if we're going to just grade it off and then, you know, grass seed it. So again, I think it's just a bigger conversation of what we want it to look like after it's done.
I mean, we've done a couple of them in the last, probably four or five years, and they're not inexpensive.
No.
So it's, it doesn't, it only takes a few items to run the cost up, you know, to a decent amount, so.
I just think the parents would like to have this happen, you know, whatever you have to do to make it usable for the kids.
I think we'll try to do the repairs in the short term, and then you may see this as a warmth article coming up. I think that's the type of expense we're speaking about.
Okay. So any, any other subcommittee reports? Instruction and technology, Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to call up Carrie Purchase, Josh Murphy, and Nancy Miss Bart, Miss Stern, come on up, this is exciting. Our middle school team, Carrie, you want to introduce, Patrick, you want to, you want to do your thing?
Well, I can introduce Mrs. Stern, who can speak much more passionately and intelligently about the National History Day program. So this past fall, Mrs. Stern, who is a sixth grade social studies teacher at Marshall Simons Middle School, presented an idea, a proposal, something that I had never heard of before, quite honestly, and was so enthusiastic about bringing National History Day to Marshall Simons Middle School, through the support of, you know, the Dr. Conti, we were able to add an extracurricular activity, she recruited students, and they were amazing, I believe that the theme was...
Triumph and tragedy.
Triumph and tragedy. These are projects that students identified themselves, did the research, and created products in a variety of ways, so I will let Mrs. Stern then talk about.
So National History Day is its own organization, but it is supported by the Smithsonian, the US government, and many other organizations as well, and it is open to students in grades six through twelve in two different divisions. Marshall Simons competes in the junior division, sixth... Marshall Simons competes in the junior division six through eight. And every year in June, they inform us of a new theme and students may begin working on the theme. So, this past year, it was triumph and tragedy. And the goal is students picking a topic that is interesting to them, that also connects to the theme, but a primary focus is the use of primary resources and learning different researching skills, as well as putting together an annotated bibliography. There's individuals and groups, the groups can go up to five students and they can showcase their research and their hard work in a variety of different ways. And we had about 30 so students this year who did National History Day, which was amazing turnout for our first year. We had six different projects move on to the state competition from the district competition, which was just a local area. And from there, as a total surprise in our first year, but not a surprise seeing these projects, we had two different groups move on to the national competition, which will be held from June 9th to June 13th at College Park, Maryland, at the University of Maryland. And those students who are moving on are, represent one individual group, individual performance and three students work together on a group documentary. So, if that is okay, I would like to call them forward and they can introduce themselves and talk a little bit about what they did their topics on.
Julia, why don't you go first? You need this.
Hi. I'm Julia Schwartzman and I'm in sixth grade. Oh, I did, I did the junior individual performance. Mine was on Rosie the Riveter. We've been doing all this since, what?
February.
October.
October.
A long time. And it's really exciting to be going to Nationals with all of them and yeah.
So, Julia, we had a chance to chat at school one day and you told me some stuff I never knew about Rosie the Riveter, so what's, was there a Marilyn Monroe reference in there? Do I remember that correctly?
Yes, Marilyn Monroe was actually at Rosie the Riveter, one of them, before she was Marilyn Monroe and that's actually how they discovered her. At the time, she was just Norma Jean Baker and they went to go take pictures of the Rosies and they thought she was pretty.
So, and the other thing, Julia's category was performance, so she actually performed as Rosie the Riveter, is that correct?
Yes.
And how was that? How many people were around?
Um, not that many, just the judges, Miss Sterneman, my mom, the Latin teacher, and some of my friends, yeah.
There'll be a lot more people at Nationals. So, the top two from each category move on to Nationals. So, it's, all 50 states are represented, plus many of the island territories, Puerto Rico, Guam, and many overseas schools that are part of the Department of Defense schools, so military-based schools in Germany, Japan. So, Julia will be up against around 105 or 6 other individual performances. Carrie, you three?
That's awesome.
Hi, I'm Emerson.
I'm Noel Martin. I'm in seventh grade at Marshall Simons Middle School.
And I'm Matt Shannon. We're all in seventh grade.
We made a documentary on the Wubron Cancer Cluster. It was in the like 70s and 80s. A big company, WR Grace polluted the drinking water and some of, like, I think eight families, yeah, eight families were affected and were diagnosed with leukemia. And the families hired a lawyer and James Schlickman and he helped them get a lot of money, so.
What was the coolest thing you guys got to do?
We got to interview the lawyer. We got to, yeah, we got to interview the attorney and two of the moms who lost their children.
It was way back in the 70s and 80s, huh?
So, these three took first place at the state competition for a junior documentary.
They will also be going up against 100-plus other documentaries as well.
Just awesome. I, I watched the video. It's usually not that exciting to interview a lawyer, but...
He's quite the lawyer.
He was quite the lawyer, so.
The best part for these three and for Julia is between each competition, they're able to go through and revise their work. So, Julia pretty much doubled her project between districts and states. You guys didn't quite double it, but you...
We redid the whole thing.
More interviews and everything else. There, there are standards that they have to meet. They cannot be more than, both of these groups, they cannot be more than 10 minutes. That's really only the major rule for you guys, right? The other categories have more. Other students that I just wanna give a shout out to, we did have two groups take third place, so they were runner-up to go to the national competition and they were really hoping that they would get to go. There were some little plans that were probably not great, but they had all kinds of plans that they were going to do to try to get to go as a group. We had an eighth grade student, Leila Ahmed, who took third place for her paper on apartheid. And we had a group of four seventh grade girls, Julia Griffin, Nora Crossman, Natalie Semolka and Jules Pescatelli, who did a group exhibit board project on Eliza Hamilton, because they were very passionate Hamilton fans and they learned so much. We also had another student just find out last week that he won a prize for the best junior project on the American Revolution, and that was Aiden Khalifa, who wrote a paper on the battles of Lexington and Concord. So, for our first time out, we did incredibly well as a group. And if you do wanna see their documentaries being revised, so still a work in progress. Hers will be filmed shortly.
Our state's documentary that we presented at State is up on YouTube under the Wubron Cancer Cluster, so you can find it there.
It's on the school website as well. And I'll repost it on Facebook tonight too, so we look forward to seeing the new version.
And the exhibit is on display at the Marshall Simons Library.
Great. Excellent.
That'd be great. Can we, can we get a picture and I'll give Miss Sterneman just incredible leadership in this. I know you did a great job highlighting the kids, but thank you so much for all the effort that you put in.
They did the majority of the work.
Can I come around, please? Carrie and Josh, you guys spread out.
Oh, somebody in the seat?
Yes.
We're all gonna do it right up front. The way parents, if parents wanna dig...
We don't want Bob in the picture. I'm gonna be in front.
Julia, you gotta be in front.
All of you in the front.
You guys did a wonderful job.
There's no clicking sounds anymore. We're the click boys.
Great job.
We also wanna thank Miss Sterneman for bringing this program to our school. It was a wonderful opportunity.
Even though I...
That is really nice. I hope everybody in town becomes aware of that. It's just, we're so proud of you, really.
We can put Carrie on the spot again. No, we just, we didn't, we heard in between sort of the planning for this meeting, you had some Latin scholars doing very well. So, come on up and tell us about your Latin scholars and then I think Madam Chair, she's next on the agenda as well.
I believe one of our Latin scholars is here. Come on down.
Oh, here we go. I didn't realize that.
Latin scholar.
So, and I will apologize because I don't have the actual printout and we'll be able to recognize all the students who achieved a great honor.
You can send it to us.
We will absolutely send it to you. I believe there's a blog post drafted as well and publicized. So, Mr. Walsh, who's our Latin teacher, each year our students participate in the National Latin exam, both at the seventh grade level and the eighth grade level. This year in seventh grade, four of our students got perfect scores on the National Latin exam, which is really a testament to their hard work and to Mr. Walsh's support of their, their hard work. It's not an easy feat.
It was.
Do you wanna talk a little bit about the exam?
Yeah, so it is all, it can go from Latin culture to comprehension. So, it's a wide range of studying that we did for every Monday or so. And we took it for about an hour and everybody didn't finish until like 30 minutes over the time because we all wanted to get really good scores. So, it was really hard as well.
I think your perseverance paid off. Quite an accomplishment to be a national award winner and going to Nationals for National History Day, so quite impressive.
Thank you.
So, we definitely get that information to the committee.
I wanna throw out there as well that the other two members of Matt's History Day team also were awarded for their scores.
Yes, maybe not perfect, but still, still right.
But they were close to perfect.
So, the other perfect scores were Nathaniel Chow, Julia Griffin and Alexis Emerson. And certainly congratulations to Mr. Walsh as well for his guidance.
Latin language of the future.
Any comments?
It's amazing.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's kind of unbelievable.
So, again, just for context, I'm sorry if this was already said, but 22,000 students around the globe actually took this exam, like, so it's not just the National Latin exam, it's really international, but I think the name of the company that sponsored it is the National Latin exam. So, 442 in the country, perfect scores and we had four at Marshall Simons.
Okay. Dr. Conti, you wanna move into the next item?
I was gonna have you guys stay up, so I can't. So, the middle school, again, this is Carrie's, Josh's first year in leadership of the middle school. Again, I think they're doing an outstanding job. I think a lot of the year has been developing relationships, getting to know, again, outstanding teachers like Miss Sterneman that make up the middle school staff and then looking some, looking at some aspects of the middle school. And one of the aspects that we've been hearing about for a while is the middle school schedule. And so, I'm gonna let Carrie and Josh sort of talk about the, the process they went through, which I think was extensive, guiding principles. And just as everyone sort of knows that scheduling, like anything else, is about compromise because we're trying to fit a whole lot of programming and a whole lot of services into a limited timeframe, so we have to make some choices. And a lot of, when you have to make choices and compromises, there's gonna be opinions on either side of those. And that's why I think it's really important to establish some guiding principles, like we try to do when we read district. And I just think we're gonna speak to those guiding principles and I hope that you'll see those guiding principles reflected in the decisions that were made about the schedule. One other point, Madam Chair, or Vice Chair or Chair of the evening, I think on the agenda it said something about, this is not, we're not expecting to vote tonight. We're gonna approach this like a, sort of a policy conversation. So, this is really meant to be a first, first reading. This is really the first time school committee would see the new schedule in depth. I know that you're receiving some comments from some parents. There may even be some parents here who wanna comment on it.
There are people who will wanna speak after it.
So, we can speak after and so this, this, we're not, again, just for everyone, we're not deciding tonight. We're, we're learning tonight and then, and I think we can take the feedback that we get and sort of look at what's been going on and report from there, so.
It's challenging.
Bob's getting some technology. Bob is getting some technology for us. So, why don't we start with just the conversation and we can talk about the process.
Yeah, so I wanna first recognize, as you did, Miss Monica, that this is a challenging conversation. It's something that we identified and it wasn't that, you know, Josh and I came in and identified this as a need. This was something that came out of an early conversation with faculty last June and when they were asked, what's the one thing, if we could only focus on one thing, what would it be? And a, a large percentage of people said the schedule, time on learning, inclusion. So, people who had been living the schedule identified that as a need and started. So, tonight, we're gonna go over the review process, the process that we engaged in. We'll go over kind of what the proposed schedule is and then we're also gonna provide an overview of the program of studies. Not a narrative-based program of studies, but certainly kind of our scope and sequence of what we're proposing over what a, what a student's experience would be for, you know, in their career at Marshall Simons Middle School. So, before we head in, I do wanna recognize the, the number of conversations that we've had and really want to show my gratitude, my appreciation. So, we had a, we engaged a faculty advisory committee in this process. We had about 20 to 30 people who on a monthly basis volunteered their time to be part of this process and there were some very difficult conversations that we've had to have and that we continue to have. So, I just wanted to recognize that. What we're presenting to you tonight is not what, you know, kind of what we started. It has evolved over time and I don't foresee this being, you know, when, when the committee does vote on this, I don't see this being the end of the conversation. I think it becomes the beginning of the conversation and it becomes part of our regular process. But each year, we look at the schedule to make sure it's meeting the needs of, of our students. And to my knowledge, I'm not sure that that's been kind of done in a very long time. I think that as needs have come up, there have been things that have been added over time, but I think that this was one of the first times where we took a couple steps back and we really looked at what it is that we currently have and what it is that we hope to have. So, you ready to drive?
Yep.
Okay. So, as I said, you know, I, I think you've seen this picture before, this was a, a need identified by the faculty, the people who've been working at Marshall Simons Middle School far longer than I have. And this was the beginning of our timeline. We identified the need. We established a faculty advisory committee in September and that committee started with identifying what, what's good about the schedule, what works with the, the current schedule and then also the opportunities for growth and the needs. We, we looked at other middle school schedules. We didn't just look at local schedules. I think we had schedules from North Carolina and maybe even the West Coast where we looked at what are other middle schools doing? And not to say that what other middle schools are doing are better than what we're doing, but just so that we're not kind of starting at scratch, like what, what's out there, what's working, what doesn't work. At that point, we came, after looking at over 30 schedules, the faculty said, okay, let's look at a few possibilities for Marshall Simons. So, we took the feedback from looking on the schedule review of other middle schools and we went back to the faculty advisory committee with three or four different schedule models and different meeting patterns and things. From there, again, got feedback and kind of where we landed was in our first version of what we're gonna show you tonight. We shared that out with the broader faculty in our school council in February and then we started to test it out, 'cause that's the, that's the other piece, that we need to make sure that not only do we have, you know, a schedule that on paper works, but that when we start making sure that we have enough places for kids to go to and, and make sure that'll work. So, our original draft of the proposed schedule didn't end up working. There were some barriers and some challenges that we hit, some hiccups that then forced some additional conversations and again, really appreciate and respect the advocacy of certain groups and certain departments because there were definitely, you know, some give and take and some compromise through this and I appreciate their willingness. We came back in April, which seemed like a really long time ago, with a proposed, a revision of the schedule in a, in a way that we thought would work. We continue to feel confident that this will, will go forward as we continue to test models out and getting ready to kind of really test it out.
So, I think if you look at the image we have up there now, that shows, I think it's grade six. So, the biggest problem we have in the building right now is we don't have a schedule, we have nine schedules. We have three different grade levels, three different teams per grade level. Each team has their own unique schedule. The current schedule, I mean, if you just look at it there, you can see the inconsistency really quickly with a quick glance, even from this far away. So, the second piece of this current model is that we're on a Monday through Friday kind of fixed schedule. So, anytime we hit a Monday holiday, which... So, anytime we hit a Monday holiday, which are a few throughout the year, those classes aren't happening, so those classes that meet on the Mondays are meeting less throughout the year than potentially the other courses. The biggest piece here that you can see is the inconsistent instructional times. I'm gonna actually stand up and just point, I'm sorry. If you look at the middle schedule on the second day, you can kind of see that all the blocks that are colored are where students are in math, science, social studies, or ELA. Okay, all the areas that are kind of in white are where they're at some sort of allied art, whether it's tech ed, consumer science, PE, health, et cetera. So, if you look at the Tuesday on the second schedule, you can see that that, they have, they go to four specials that day. So, their academic blocks are only 25 minutes, only getting 25 minutes in each academic area. And then the very next day, they're hit with classes that are kind of closer to 70 minutes. So, both students and teachers are dealing with that inconsistency throughout the week, and throw in a snow day here or there, and any lesson that you had planned for, you know, the 75 minutes or whatever is kind of out the window because you're not getting that time back. We also have a decent number of split blocks, so you can see where one class might meet, where it's before either lunch and a few specials, and then they come back again. So, while that class might meet for 50 minutes throughout the day, they're doing two smaller meeting times. So, those are all some of the major kind of challenges we're dealing with. A second piece to this is the special classes, they all have inconsistent durations as well. So, a lot of the special classes might meet for one quarter, or one semester, or a full year, and some of them meet for a half of a quarter. So, there's inconsistent times, the number of times they meet during the week, and the duration in terms of the school year. In the current schedule, some of the program, some programming we have in the building is taking place during core academic time, so that's one thing that we were looking to address as a major challenge. We have a fantastic music program, we love what our kids have accomplished throughout the years with our music program. But currently, right now, a lot of those times where they're getting music instruction is happening in place of core academic instruction, they're being pulled out of an academic class to then go attend or to go work with a music teacher. Special education services are challenging with a schedule like this because you can see that nothing lines up. So, when we have maybe one service provider that we want to work with four or five different kids at the same time, it's tough for them to actually find a spot in the week where they can actually work with those kids. So, we have, it makes us, we have a lot of resources in this district, we are very rich with resources, I think this, the school committee and superintendent have done a great job supporting us and getting us what we need, but we can't, we're using them very inefficiently. So, the fact that everything is scattered really impacts the way that we can provide special education. Also, there, the activity block takes place on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the very end of the day. It is a 40-minute block at the end of the day. Right now, there's a wide range of activities that are happening, so our music ensembles and music groups are practicing at that time. And then we have a very wide range of other activity offerings for the students, whether it's something more athletic, there are some academic-based ones, some that are more kind of extracurricular activities. So, there's a lot of inconsistency there as well. And I think one of the big factors that you don't really look, you don't really notice when you first look at it, there's no transition times built in. So, when one class ends on the schedule, another class is beginning immediately. So, we know that students, it takes them more than two seconds to get from one place to another, and if you are coming from the gym area and going to a 6th grade classroom, it's a decent hike to get there. So, none of that stuff is built into the schedule, so we are, we're losing instruction there as well. So, our, the goal of, we came up with for a new schedule is we hoped to create a master schedule for Marshall Simons Middle School that effectively meets the diverse need of all learners, allows us to efficiently use available resources, and offers our students a well-balanced curricular program, including allied arts classes.
As Dr. Condi said, we also established some guiding principles as we went through this. Consistent instructional times is very important as we talked to our faculty by the committee. They also identified 50 minutes, an instructional block as kind of being the magic number. They were, you know, very clear that they didn't want to go under 50 minutes in terms of, you know, 47-minute blocks to allow them time to meet the individual needs of students and to plan rigorous instruction. We were hoping to reduce the number of pullouts, we weren't looking to eliminate the number of pullouts, but reduce them. The disruptions to learning for students and, you know, for the individual student and for the class can be very problematic in terms of, you know, how do we plan something when you know that, you know, five of your students might be in a band rehearsal, or in a lesson, or different things? So, I think that we were looking at ways to minimize that and maintain programming, which was another one of our guiding principles. We did not want to come into this and say, okay, we are going to eliminate this program. We wanted, Marshall Simons actually offers more programming in the allied arts department than most middle schools do, and that was a priority for us to maintain that. And that meant that there needed to be some give and take along the way, that it was, it was gonna be difficult to fit that into the day as it stood. We were looking at providing more consistent transition times for students and being transparent about those times so that there's clarity of when that's happening. Increasing lunchtime for students, right now, students have 20 minutes to eat lunch, and that includes transition time. So, if their class ends, they get to the cafeteria, they need to buy lunch, get lunch, and then they're on their way within 20 minutes. So, we need to give them time to go from their classroom to the cafeteria. I don't know about anybody else, but 20 minutes is really short to time for lunch. And then we wanted to maintain the opportunities for collaboration as much as we could for our faculty. So, our proposed schedule structure.
So, the bell schedule that we kind of settled on is we're gonna continue to have a abbreviated homeroom period at the very beginning of the day. Our teachers felt like it is an important piece to be able to get all the housekeeping items done. We did shorten it a little bit in hopes, with hopes that the expectations are that students are there by 7:35 and we can kind of get ready for business as quick as possible. We have six blocks, so it's a six-block day, so the students would be attending six classes throughout the day, and each block is gonna be 54 minutes long. The only difference to that would be the fourth block of the day, and the reason why that ends up being 60 a little bit longer is that we are, we have to also offer lunch during that time. So, to have three 25-minute lunches and classes, that ends up requiring that time to be a little bit longer. So, some of our students, if they went to the first lunch, they would have lunch first, then go to class, if they had the third lunch, they'd go to class and then go to lunch, and if they were in the second lunch, they would, they would still have a split block. And we've talked about different ways where we can kind of rotate that around, so it's not the exact same students with a split block all the time.
And I just want to point out, the reason why bells are on boats is because we don't necessarily want to actually ring a bell during the day, our clocks are synchronized, so we're just posting consistent times across the building for movement.
The last piece in there is time to, as you know, we are a one-to-one, we are lucky enough to be a one-to-one school, and there is kind of a bit of a commotion sometimes for students returning devices at the end of the day. You know, some students might be with their team, but other ones might be in kind of an allied art, whether it's PE or health. A lot of our teachers that are in those, you know, allied arts areas do use the iPads for instruction, so we wanted to make sure we had something built in so teachers can use the devices and feel comfortable using devices, and we have time to kind of get them back in an organized way.
So, we are also proposing a six-day rotating schedule so that we are able to, one, account for that day of week piece, where essentially, Monday through Friday is a five-day rotation. We are looking at six days, it also provides us additional places to maintain our programming in terms of allied arts, and we look at the different meeting patterns as we go into the program of studies. We are proposing a rotating schedule as, you know, we're not all morning people, so, you know, if you had the same class every morning when you started off your day and it was your least favorite class, it would be, it would be difficult maybe to get motivated to come to school. I also think that when you, when you talk to teachers, sometimes you see different kids at different points in the day, some kids are ready to go first thing, and some kids are ready to go at the end of the day. So, really maintaining that so that they would be seen at different points during the day is an effective piece. This also accounts for where we may have a split block, is that lunch block, so if you had second lunch, we might still have that split instructional block. And I think that this would make sure that it's not hitting the same class every day as well. So, rotating schedule, day one would be the first day of school, so this is an example of what it would look like for the first few weeks of September, so day one would be on a Tuesday, day five would be the following Monday, day six would be Tuesday, and then the next day one would be on Wednesday, and that would continue throughout the year.
And if we had other holidays throughout the year, you would just skip that day and have the number.
Correct. So, we would plan, any planned days out of school, known in advance, would be reflected in our rotation. Snow days, we would end up dropping that day and kind of adding it to the end, so that would be an unexpected piece. So, we, we mentioned most of the highlights here, it's a six-block rotating schedule, 54 minutes of instructional blocks, except for that 60 minutes during the lunch block, three minutes of transition time, increase the lunch from 20 minutes to 25 minutes with transition time as well, so there's actually a little bit more time gained there. We added the end-of-the-day homeroom so that students are able to access their iPads all day long. And again, I think that this is something that most, during the day, most things are happening where there's a designated time where kids are going back to homeroom, so we're just kind of formalizing that and being transparent about it. And then, we are hoping to move to trimesters and semesters for grading periods and for grading purposes. And then the other piece of this is this will allow students in the same grade to go to their allied arts classes, their specials at the same time. Right now, because there are three different team schedules at each of the grade levels, you go to PE with just the people on your team, you go to your health class with your homeroom. So, this will provide additional peer interaction across the grade level as well, because now you can go to your world language class with kids from all three different teams. So, the program of studies, again, this is not a narrative form, that is on our list of things to do for next year, but just wanted to be transparent and kind of look at what a child, the student's experience is gonna be over the course of three years. So, the core academic classes, which are mathematics, English Language Arts, Social Studies, and Science, will meet every day, six out of six days for the full year. So, that is something, and it'll be a consistent 54 minutes, resulting in fewer transitions for students and more consistent instructional time. World Language, and I think that this is one of the difficult conversations we've had, and again, I really want to recognize the World Language Department for engaging in an ongoing dialogue. Currently, students go, in our current schedule, in 6th grade, they go to World Language, each of the four world languages, for half a quarter. So, it comes out to about eight to 10 classes per language, and it is really meant for an exploratory, just to get a taste of the language and the culture, to help them make their decision on the one target language to choose going into 7th grade. The challenging pieces is that we typically ask kids to identify their language right around now, and so not every student has had that exploratory opportunity to taste, to try each of the languages. In 7th and 8th grade, right now, students have World Language currently for four, they meet four out of five days for 40 minutes. And again, when you add in the transition times, they probably have about 35 minutes of instruction during that time. What we are proposing is that, we are proposing that students choose their target language entering into 6th grade, and that that class would meet for two out of six days for the entire year. And then in 7th grade and 8th grade, it would increase to three out of six dates. Couple, I'm sorry?
You said two out of six.
In 6th grade, and then? In three out of six, in 7th and 8th grade. So, this, you know, certainly represents, you know, two significant changes, one, asking students to select which language they're gonna study for the next three years as they enter 6th grade, and the second being that instead of meeting four times a week, they're gonna be going every other day. I think that with the increase in instructional time in the blocks, so going from a 40-minute block to a 54-minute block, under this model, we're actually increasing the contact time for students in the one target language. So, we're going from 11,970 minutes, which is the current time where they study one language, primarily in 7th and 8th grade, and then, and we're increasing that to 12,960 minutes over the course of three years. Now, I want to recognize that that's, you know, that there's concerns around the, you know, the consistency in which they're meeting, you know, four out of five versus three out of six, and certainly, students, as we transition into next year, that might present, you know, kind of a blip that we would need to account for. I do think that over time, that would, that would be accounted for, we'd be increasing the time in the target language, and we'd be able to maintain the four languages. After hearing information and kind of feedback from families at our coffee hour that we had a couple weeks ago, we are exploring a way to perhaps see if we can, at least for some part of 6th grade, have that be an exploratory experience, maybe the beginning part of 6th grade, so that students can still have that taste of the language and culture before choosing. But again, that's scheduling, and that's master schedule, and trying to make sure that we have, you know, the spaces. So, we're not sure that we're able to do that, but we haven't given up on trying to give them that exploratory experience in 6th grade. So, our allied arts classes, again, Marshall Simons has a wide range of offerings. We are, currently, there is reading classes in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, what they would refer to as classroom reading. I think that in 6th grade, our classroom reading curriculum is very solid in terms of the skills that we're teaching. They really embed a lot of strategies, the KDL strategies, and close reading, and that was something that we heard from our educators, that they really wanted to maintain that reading class, that additional reading time and reading instruction in 6th grade. In 7th and 8th grade, students also, most students will have a classroom reading, where core, different academic teachers, so you might have a math teacher teaching reading, or you might have a science teacher teaching reading, and that is an experience, and it's, the curriculum there is certainly, it's reading, it's not as well-developed. So, as we were trying to kind of, again, try to fit as much as we could and maintain programming, that is something that, a change that we're putting forward, that it would continue in 6th grade for two out of six days, but that we wouldn't have that in 7th and 8th grade, except for students with an identified deficit in reading. Students who needed additional support in reading would continue to get support in reading. Physical education is, we're proposing that in 6th grade, it would meet two out of six days for the full year, and then in 7th and 8th grade, three out of six days for the full year. Music, we are, right now, our current program in music is that 6th grade has music one day week for the entire year. 7th grade, Mr. Murphy, you're gonna tell me out with this one again, 7th grade.
Two times a week for a half a year.
And then, there's currently no music for students in 8th grade unless they're in performance groups. And that was something that wasn't documented anywhere, and people have come and said, you took me, I'm like, no, I didn't say musical way, it hasn't been. So, we felt it was really important that students, especially in middle school where they, they're still developing their passions, they might not know what they don't like or what they do like unless they're, they're kind of, you know, given the opportunity to experience, that we wanted every student to have a music experience over the course of three years at the middle school. We also very much wanted to make the performance groups a part of the schedule. Right now, the performance groups either meet during activity block, and feedback that we've heard from students and from families is that their child going into 6th grade will decide not to continue with their instrument because that means that they don't get to participate in activity block, so we were forcing a choice there. Or, the performance groups are also meeting during core academic classes potentially, so that they're being pulled from core instruction to do that. So, we were trying to come up with a system that would allow more students to participate in music, and that there would not necessarily be kind of a choice. There's always choices, we did, we did have to build in some choice, but it is a music choice. So, all students will, or most students will take music, and they can choose band, or chorus, or orchestra, or general music. So, it's an elective under the umbrella of Music Department, and that will meet two out of six days for a full year. So, we are increasing music experience for all of our students. I also want to recognize that in order to do this... I also want to recognize that in order to do this, and as we've gone through this process, we were, we were trying to utilize our existing staff. So in order to do this, and, you know, to, to also kind of go back to our guiding principles, which was to reduce the pullouts, is that we are looking at eliminating music lessons in seventh and eighth grade. We, through some discussion, our original proposal did have us eliminating lessons across the board. But through ongoing conversations with Mr. Middleton Cox, feedback from families, we are hoping that we're able to maintain lessons in sixth grade, so that there's kind of that bridge between the foundational music skills and then the performance groups. Art will meet two out of six days for a full year in sixth grade. This was something that our art teachers advocated for, and something, again, that our original schedule that we went forward did not have them meeting every day for a full year. But we were able to, to go back to the drawing board and look at that. And then in seventh and eighth grade, they would meet two out of six days for half of the year. Health would meet for two out of six days for a semester across all three grade levels. And then, I'm going to skip over computer science and tech ed, and then consumer science, so family consumer sciences. Right now, students have that for their cooking or sewing for half a quarter in all three grades. And what we're proposing is in order to maintain that reading instruction in sixth grade, is that we would focus on family consumer sciences in seventh and eighth grade. It, this does not represent a loss of contact time. So it's just kind of compacting that time across two grade levels as opposed to three grade levels. And then the computer science tech ed. So right now, students have two experiences. They either go to computer cla, or they go to computer class and a tech ed class. And with the district really focusing on computer science for all and developmental levels of students, that we're really excited to kind of combine those two separate departments or classes, and really focus on providing computer science at all grade levels with different focuses. So kind of the foundational computer science discoveries in sixth grade, and continuing that through seventh and eighth grade, and then also bringing elements of engineering and information sciences into that. So, that, what this schedule accomplishes, kind of going back to what our goal was, is that it's a unified building schedule. So we would be on one building schedule, and we would all be kind of moving at the same time. Our classes would be consistent lengths. We have longer student lunches and consistent instructional time, includes time for transitions. Again, they're already transitioning, we're just, you know, kind of saying, this is the time that they're actually moving. It maintains instructional time in the core academics and maintains programming. There were adjustments in programming, but nothing was eliminated. It's reducing the number of pullouts in terms of the rehearsals happening, and it's also reducing the number of lessons that are happening during core instruction. It maintains collaborative time for core academic teachers, and then the trimesters and, or semesters for grading periods. So just to look at a couple sample schedules. Some people find the different colors helpful, some people don't. But this would be a sample of a sixth grade schedule where you can see where, in this sample, A math is that kind of fuchsia color, and you can see how that rotates through the six days. And that's the same for all four core academics, so math, ELA, social studies, and science. For this particular schedule, their allied arts times would be during that, the B block, which would then rotate, so that's the lighter pink colors. So reading would be on day one and four, so that's the two out of six. PE would be on day two and day five. And then, I lost pink, it's dark pink. Music would be on days three and six. And that music could get, again, could be orchestra, band, or chorus. The other allied arts block would be art, so that would be days one and four for the full year. And then days two and five, it's health or computer science, so that's where that semester would switch. So if you started in health class, you'd have computer science the second half of the year. If you started in computer science, you'd have health class the second half of the year. And then world language would be the two out of the six in the sixth grade schedule. And then seventh, eighth, very similar, the difference being the world language and the PE. So world language would meet three out of six days in this model, and then PE would complement that on the opposite days. And then the semester courses would be in that second allied arts block, and then the music classes would be meet for the full year. So, also in, in wanting to be transparent, I think it was about a year ago that I started learning more about Marshall Simon's Middle School and their program of studies, and I've had many conversations over the course of the year around mathematics at the middle school. And currently, we have three levels of mathematics. We have the D block, which is the accelerated. Each team has one D block class. B and C block, which is the grade level, and then we have A block, which is the, what they would term the inclusion block. I think that they're all meeting the standards. I think that the three levels really is about going much, you know, slower in terms of their pacing in that A block math, not providing as many opportunities for application, whereas D block's going at a faster pace. What we are proposing going forward, and so I, I think that, one, transparency, that if you didn't have a child who went through Marshall Simon's Middle School before, you might not know about D block math, and you might not know about B and C block math. So one, we wanted to just kind of, you know, kind of put it out there and say, this is what we're currently doing. And two, I think that one of the challenges to this is that in the past, because there was only three sections of D block math, that one, class sizes went up, and that teachers were only asked to recommend 26 or 27 of kind of their highest-performing math students for that class. What we're proposing for next year is that we're going to have two levels of mathematics. One is going to be the accelerated, which kind of translates to the D block. And we are going to have as many sections as needed. Our teachers right now are going through recommendation process. They've established criteria that looks at a variety of data points, including kind of the, the characteristics of a learner, or habits of a learner. And then we'll have the grade level class as well. And that special education services will be provided based on a student's IEP. Right now, on some of our A block classes, have a high percentage of students on IEPs and 504s, and we're looking to make sure that students are getting what they need in that inclusive setting, so much more heterogeneously grouped across those two levels. In the future, kind of an ongoing conversation is really looking at identifying students who are, are able to learn at faster cases and are really ready for, for more of a challenge, and looking at compacting our seventh and eighth grade frameworks into one year, and then bringing a true Algebra I course, so into the eighth grade. So, and we've had conversations with the high school around that as well. So again, just where that, that typically happens with D block goes into, you know, is kind of an Algebra I, but there are, you know, I think, you know, in other places, it's, you know, there are some of the standards that are missing. So we just want to be moved towards in that direction. So, that, oh, 21st Century Learning.
So that brings us to?
This is an exciting one.
An exciting one. So I think one thing you, we were talking about doing is, with taking the music groups and kind of turning that into a class, we were really kind of packing our schedule full of, you know, both core academic classes and allied offerings for kids. And we wanted to make sure that we still found time throughout the school year to kind of do some of those outside of the classroom learning opportunities for students. So we had some, we had a group of teachers that had gone to Knott's Regional School recently, I believe it was in the January, February timeline. And they basically had kind of done something similar, and, you know, essentially their high school, they shut the, the school down for the day, and a lot of kids are working on either service projects, or they're bringing in outside people from the community. It's almost like a professional development day for kids, if you want to think about it like that. We know the high school, Burlington High School just did something similar with their Health and Wellness Day, where they were, had all sorts of different offerings for students. So we're currently kind of terming the 21st Century Learning Conference, that's not an official term, but that's what we're, we're using for now. We would look to kind of do it three times throughout the year, once each kind of trimester, where we would kind of go with a different schedule for the day, where we could offer all sorts of different activities for students that focused on their passion, different creativity, and the different skills that they have. It would give us a chance to, you know, capitalize on all the different resources we have in this community. We do have, you know, how many businesses are actually on the other side of 95 or down near the Middlesex Turnpike that we could be tapping into and bringing folks in here to kind of work with our students? Which isn't really easy to do on a regular basis, to say, can you come here for 40 minutes every Tuesday and Wednesday for the next month and a half? But if we can kind of give them a day ahead of time, we could set up some pretty interesting opportunities for students. The other thing that would be nice about this is that it can be kind of thematic. So each one of the three could have, you know, one could be more of kind of a social-emotional, Health and Wellness Day, another one could be more kind of career-oriented. So again, this, we're in the early stages of having these conversations, but there's a lot of opportunity here. And I think we had the Burlington High School student leaders come down and work with our seventh graders recently as peer educators. And it would be another kind of great opportunity to get kids down from the high school. You know, with both of our schedules kind of rotating, starting at different times, it's not as easy to kind of collaborate with them. So infusing these days into our year would really help, you know, foster those relationships. So it's something we're very excited about. And that is it.
So why don't we start with comments from the committee, and then we'll open up to anyone else who wants to speak.
Can you just take a second and explain the trimester? Do we get report cards for it? Is it going to tie into that?
So, so, yeah, so I think that we're, early on, we were looking at the, some of our allied arts classes meeting on a trimester basis, which started the trimester conversation. The faculty were really kind of excited about the three marking periods. Right now, we have four, and we do, we actually have eight, because we do progress reports. And the progress reports aren't an actual representation of the grade. It's you get a, your, your child's in this range. So what we are, so that's where the conversation started. It had to do with the meeting patterns of classes. What we're proposing is that if we go to the trimester piece, that we're also looking to leverage our online gradebook through Aspen and get more consistent use, so that there's more up-to-date information across, across the grading period. So which, right now, it's, it, there's not a lot of consistency across the building. Some people use it every day, some people only use it to enter grades. So we're hoping to, to become more consistent, so that you can go onto Aspen and see where, where your child's current progress is, and kind of rely on that. So that's where that came from. So it's the trimester or semester, so the classes that meet from on a semester basis. If you think of it, because if we're looking at trimesters, it would be a 60-day, and, you know, in terms of a trimester, and then it would be 30 days. So what we would have is like, you know, kind of a long grading period, and then a really short grading period. So for classes that are meeting on a half-year basis, we're proposing that there be two progress reports, and then one final grade, so that, or no, three progress reports, no, two progress reports. So that they would get a progress report in the middle of the first trimester. They would get a progress report at the end of the first trimester. And then they would get a, a final grade for the allied arts class at the end of the semester. That's for the half-year mark. So it would be the second progress, it would be the progress report for the second trimester.
So then when we get the second report card, which would be the end of the?
It would be a remark, yep.
That would have the final grade for the half year?
It would be listed there. So we, you would get it before that, so you'd get it on the progress report. But then it would be on that report card as well.
Okay. All right. And then the other question was beam? Is that staying?
We, yeah. So when we, when we went through this process, again, we were trying to reduce the number of, of pullouts, not eliminate, and we felt like the structure, we, we had enough on our plate in terms of looking at the, the structure of the schedule. So there are no proposed changes to beam, except that I believe that they're going to be following the six-day rotation, so that it's not going to be pulled out Monday through Friday. So right now, because there's five days and there's three grade levels, I believe Mrs. Rogers sees all of the seventh grade in one day, so things can get pretty tight in there. So I think that the, the plan is, is to kind of split sixth grade, seventh grade, they each get, each get two days, in, in terms of the whole grade being split over the course of two days.
Oh, that's a lot. There might be some more questions as we go through. But again, you know, this, this, I don't know how any substitute would lock in and follow those schedules the first time I saw it. So, I mean, that's, I'm very pleased to see that there's a change, and appreciate all the time, energy in the conversations, because each department needs to advocate for themselves. And the last thing you want to do as a teacher or professional is lose any of that time in front of the children. So I can understand how difficult those conversations are. And, and I sense this might be a fluid, a fluid round, nothing's, you know, perfect the first time through. So I can see maybe changes moving through as, as it gets tweaked and put out, so.
Absolutely. I think that has to be part of our regular process, is what's working, what's not working, and what adjustments we can make. And so I, I think that this is the initial step, and see us kind of looking at it, living under it for a while, and then coming back together, getting feedback from, from faculty, students, families, you know, October, November-ish, and then, you know, continuing to look and make sure that it meets the needs. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions and a general comment, I guess. With the going two out of six, three out of six for various things, is that going to create any staffing issues in terms of either teachers taking on more than they used to have, or teachers don't have as many classes as they once had? And then what will they be doing in their spare time?
So this was a staffing-neutral kind of play. So we were able to, again, we haven't gone through and kind of mapped it out completely, but based on our early models, that we're able to do that in a consistent staffing model, so that we're not adding staff and we're not reducing staff. I think that when we talked about one of our early kind of struggles was we were trying to maintain world language at four out of six days, and that created some, some challenges along the way. And again, we, we know that they very much want to have that consistency and be at those four classes, and knew that we weren't going to be able to do that with our current staffing, and to be able to fit the rest of this in. So that was where we, we had to make a tough decision. But we should stay pretty neutral. I mean, there may be some fluctuation in some of our class sizes. Right now, we have some classes that split a homeroom. So you might go to tech ed, and you might see 10 kids at a time in tech ed, because they're, you know, the two tech ed teachers are splitting a homeroom. And, you know, in our art class in eighth grade, three teachers are splitting two homerooms. So our hope is, is that there's consistent class sizes. There's always some fluctuation, but that, that we'll be able to do that across the board.
One idea, the exploratory world language in the sixth grade. I wonder if there's any way you can slide some of that introductory material down towards the end of the fifth grade? You don't necessarily have the teachers there to teach them their language, but you could cover some of the cultural stuff in spite of the fifth grade into this, into the year curriculum, just to give them a little taste.
No, I, I think that we're, we're definitely have thought about that. And, you know, certainly, I just met with each of the fifth grades at all four elementary schools and showed them a video that the teachers put together. And like, and again, I really appreciate it. So it wasn't, you know, I, I think that the timing here is, is not ideal in terms of, we're in the middle of the end of the year, but, but certainly for the future going forward, that's definitely an opportunity.
My general comment, I guess, is, and like everybody else, I appreciate what you had to do, what you're attempting to do. And that obviously, there's a lot of work, and there's a lot of moving parts. One thing that I think we've done a good job over the years in Burlington recently is keeping things like art and music and things of those things out in the, in the front burner, where a lot of districts had to cut back on that for financial reasons and time and learning reasons, and a whole bunch of other reasons. So it's a balancing test, but I think we've done a relatively good job of trying to keep those things active, and they're very popular in Burlington. They move up to high school, and we have very successful music programs and art programs because of it. And I've always been a, I'm not a STEM guy as much as I'm a little arts guy. So I like to have that component out there. Same with the world languages, you know, the world becomes smaller every day nowadays, and I think it's important that people get exposed to that. And if you can get enough of it, so you're able to master a second or third language, I think that's a good thing, too. So I appreciate that you are keeping that as part of the, of the mix. And I understand that it's not as much of the mix in some cases as it used to be. And I'm sure some staff members, parents, students probably won't be. staff members, parents, students probably won't be happy about that. The one thing that I try to keep in mind is, you know, make everybody happy, so you try to do the best you can with what you have. And I, I think you do, I think you're really making an effort to do that here, and I appreciate that. I would be nervous if you scale back any further on some of those things because I, I think they're an important part of the picture. And so I appreciate what you've done and, you know, ideally, you could try to squeeze some more into it, but without increasing the size of the day or whatever, obviously there's only so much you can do.
Yeah.
I just urge you to kind of keep that, don't be as quick as I think some other districts have been over the years in, in cutting those out because focus on the reading and writing arithmetic and, and other stuff tend to slide.
No, I, I appreciate that. I think it's really important, especially at middle school, that they have, that students have a wide range of experiences. And I think that when you talk about programs feeding into the high school, when we look at our music program, which is phenomenal by the way, I think that the quality of our music program is amazing. And when I look at a middle school our size, it, there needs, I feel like there should be more kids that are, are participating. And I think that some of the choices that they've had in the schedule has actually forced some, some students to say, okay, I'm not going to, to, you know, to, to kind of continue this. And there's always attrition, you know, there's always kind of, you know, like, you know, between fifth and sixth grade, some kids make that decision, and then also between eighth and ninth grade. But I am confident that this will start to increase some of our numbers there. And where we did lose some contact time overall in, in art education, it was, it was not as, you know, we still have it, and it's still an experience every year. So I think that that's really the struggle is to, to how to fit it all into a finite number of minutes.
Well, I appreciate the effort and keep up the good work. And as Kristen said, I'm sure this is a, a moving, a moving target, so I'm sure you'll keep your eye on it and adjust as necessary.
Yeah. And we're, we're open to feedback as well, and we continue to be. I think that, you know, in addition to having a coffee hour, both in the morning and the after, and the evening where we presented this, we also included it in a newsletter. I'm not sure that including it in the newsletter did it justice in terms of not having a narrative and an explanation that goes along with it. So we welcome feedback. I've had a number of conversations on the phone, email communications, so would love to hear from folks. I met with students, their, their voice was important. We actually presented to student council last Thursday as well. So just encourage people to continue to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I ask the audience, I just have a couple of things I want to say. First, I applaud your efforts in taking what was kind of a crazy schedule and making one that, that seems to make a lot of sense. I know it's a difficult job to address all the needs and to, to take into consideration everything that everybody wants. Quick question, is there a change, if we were to adopt this schedule or something similar to it, is there a change in the number of report cards each year?
So what we would be proposing would be going to three report cards and three progress reports for a total of six, as opposed to what we now have, which is eight.
Okay. Next question, just because it occurred to me. Was there any consideration given to, at some point in the three years, making music and art a choice, like choose one over the other? I mean, I know, you know, some people really stick at art, me, and, you know, would, would, would rather go to a music class than that class. I just wondered if there was any consideration given to that.
I, I think that there, there was. I think that what becomes challenging and is, you know, we're trying to also maintain enrollment in both. So I think that if you, if you presented, oh, you know, this year, so maybe everybody in sixth grade gets music and, and art, and then, you know, the same in seventh grade and eighth grade, you get to choose, which we can, we can do that. And one is that it's going to impact your art numbers or it's going to impact your music numbers because there, there's going to be that, that forced choice. And then we, we start getting into challenges with staffing, where we have kind of, you know, by having them choose electives within a department, we know that we're going to have, you know, twelve sections of music or, you know, thirteen sections of music, and we can plan for that, even though some of the music offerings might be different. And the same with art. We know that if everybody's taking art, we need twelve, twelve sections. So that, that becomes the challenge. We have spoken with, with both Mr. Middleton Cox and George Rackvich, the art director of Fine Arts, and talked about potentially, again, this is step one, is getting a structure, but potentially down the road, looking at developing electives within that, each of their departments. So that, and, so in art, we have three incredibly talented art teachers that all have different passions and skills. So maybe we look at providing eighth graders an elective in digital photography, digital art, painting and drawing, sculptures. And that way, again, we can, we might not be able to get every student their first choice, but we, we could provide choice within the art department, and then we're not kind of pitting one department against another, which is, which is the challenge. I think, you know, the same in music, we could look at, you know, developing a drama class, a performing arts class, so more, less on the music end of things, more on the performance end of things to, to give students those choices.
Yeah. The reason it came into my mind is because, you know, you were talking about how some kids might have their least favorite class first, you know, thing in the morning on the old schedule and not on the new one, and it made me think about, well, there are some classes that some kids probably don't really like anyway, and when it comes to electives, you know, a little flexibility would be nice, but, you know, leave that up to you. Then there are two areas that I want to mention because I have been contacted about them. One is the foreign language area, where I know there are teachers and parents who feel that foreign language at especially seventh, eighth grade level should be considered a core subject and should have as much time devoted to it as the others. Just like in high school when you take, pick a language, you don't take it fewer times in a week than you do your other core subjects. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the final one, and in some ways to me personally, the most important, is I think you did a wonderful job. Don't, don't get me wrong in any, in any way. I think your, your schedule, it covers all the bases for most of the students. But I think you probably have at least fifteen percent of your kids that are special education kids, and I didn't see this schedule built around their needs. I saw it built with maybe, well, we can handle it this way or that way or this way. But I didn't see in the premise that we would build a schedule that would, that would put the needs of our fifteen, say, percent of our kids in their plans as a primary focus so that we manage to get them the time that we need. And that's something, before we go to a final step on this, I'd ask you to look at again to see if there's a way that you can handle that.
So I, I think that in both cases, the world language case and the, the special education piece, those, one, I want to recognize that, that right now, in, in terms of world language, it's not meeting as a core academic subject. It's not meeting at the same amount of time, whether it's daily or in, in terms of minutes and, and contact time. So I do recognize that. And as I said, we did try to keep it at four. It created staffing issues and it also created other challenges. I think that I'm not opposed to having world language be a core academic and meet every day and the same amount of time as math, ELA, social studies, and science. And that means that there would be less time for, for some of those exploratories, and there would, there would have to be a decrease there in order to get that, that same amount of time and to meet all of our other guiding principles. In terms of the special education piece, special education students are always in the forefront of our, our thinking, as are all students. I think that we focused on a, a structure of a schedule that would provide us flexibility in scheduling and, and giving kids what they need. Does it include a, and at one point, we were looking at a flex block, and in order to, to get that in there, it started to impact our, you know, kind of our, our other guiding principles in terms of, you know, the length of, of blocks and the periods. And honestly, it started, we, we started saying, well, what are we going to also do, you know, for, for other students? So there, there were some, some challenges there. So I'd just like to, to say, in terms of having that, that flex block, even if we were to, to, you know, take four minutes off of each of those blocks, that's only going to give us twenty minutes. And I would argue that twenty minutes is probably not enough to meet, meet some of our students' needs in, in terms of their service delivery. Why it's not represented here is that we have individual students, individual plans, so it's hard to, to say holistically, this is what, you know, special education services would look like. I also want to recognize that right now, special education services are happening in lieu of something else. So, so a lot of our students in seventh and eighth grade, for example, are, are scheduled, students with individual education plans are scheduled into developmental reading, and that's where students potentially get their services pulled from. So now they're missing parts of that day, parts of that class, and, and trying to keep up and, and doing that. So I do think that there are other students, our teachers work with students and families to identify what their preferred classes are. And, you know, our hope is, is that this schedule provides enough flexibility that if we have students who are really passionate about music, that they'll continue to, to play music, that they're not going to be asked to not play what they're passionate about. We should have enough flexibility to do that in this current schedule. So I would, you know, welcome additional conversations around that, and I'd like to sit down and, and kind of look at kind of our current service delivery in terms of how we're, we're providing those services to students, and then also how it might look depending on that same service delivery going forward. Because I think that we can, we can talk, but until we kind of sit down and see it and operationalize it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And again, it's, it's not going to look the same for all students, nor should it look the same for all students. Students should get what they need in school.
I wonder if the developmental reading, which not all students take that, a lot of students take that during, say, foreign language time? Is that correct?
That would be the, that would be the time.
Yeah. So I wonder if, in a situation like that, if, if we could have maybe a different name for the block and have it maybe a, a block when pullouts might occur. But then again, there might be a student, you know, they're the same students who probably need the developmental reading. But are there any parents who want to add to this? I see the, the CPAC parents in the, in the back, and I'd be happy to have you give your input if you'd like to come up.
Chris, Madam Chair, may I?
Do anything you want to.
Have some questions. Again, if parents want to come up, that's fine. I just, Josh, can you put up the guiding principles again? I think it's really important that you guys look at the guiding principles because we're going to have to make compromises. And I think people are talking about the programming like an existing schedule sort of isn't here. So I think we have to look at this, make sure that we're looking at it in comparison to not what's ideal, but sort of what exists presently. And I think the, the guiding principles are going to be something that are going to shape the decisions. So we have a six-hour, twenty-minute day, a twenty-five-minute lunch. Again, Josh, roughly about what, eighteen minutes in passing time?
Apparently, yeah.
Home room, passing time, another eighteen minutes.
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-seven.
So we're, we're...
Twenty-three.
Oh, in the, in the proposed schedule, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So, so let's say fifty minutes, so we're, we're down to like a five hours and...
Thirty.
Thirty minutes, basically. We have four cores identified that are meeting every day, so math, ELA, science, social studies. If you want to add language, that's a, that's a fifth. We have, and I just wrote these off...
Sounds like a junior high, doesn't it?
Right. So if you want to put this off the, sort of, these are off the top of my head, I might admit, music, art, health, CS tech, split, PE, reading slash support, and then family consumer science. So we have a pretty robust allied arts, I think was the term that you used, program. Again, at some point, this is just a time and space problem. So if you want more flexibility, you're going to have to have less programming. You go to a seven-day rotation, but then classes are going to meet less frequently. The high school's on a seven-day rotation. There's no way you could possibly do this in a five-day rotation. There's just no way because you would have, what, five by five? You would have, what, twenty-five by six, thirty, thirty blocks of sessions? You could cut back and have your cores meet five out of six. That might give you some flexibility, but then you're not meeting every day. But Mr. Murphy, that might, again, satisfy. So I, I think we have to continually go back to the guiding principles, but you're trying to fit ten pounds of junk in a five-pound bag here. So I think the general term is some of the supports that you're providing for students that Mrs. Monaco was concerned about, I would say some of that's happening in a push-in type model, so you have...
So we have a, we are co-teaching in ELA and mathematics. We would support students in social studies and science depending on their service delivery. So that is going to continue. I think that honestly, a predictable fifty-four minutes of time actually provides those educators in the, in an inclusion setting to support a, a wide range of learners in terms of giving kind of the direct instructions, some guided practice, some independent practice, and also time to, to meet with small groups in the, in the group.
And a comment today from a, a parent said, pushing is great, but my child needs pull-out some of the time. And so I, I think that, I think that's important, and, and we need to see when that pull-out would happen. I just want to make sure there's still a team-based organization.
Absolutely.
Because again, I, I don't want to shift into many high schools here either. So kids are still going to be organized on nine...
On nine teams, so there'll still be three, four people, four, four person, five person, including the special educator team on each, at each grade level. They will continue to share the same group of students in the core academics, the difference being that when they go to their allied arts, that they might be with students on different teams. I think that based on the phone calls that I had last summer around placement and, you know, my friends, you know, my best, my child's best friend isn't on this team, that it, it actually provides us some flexibility. And I would argue that developmentally, when we have homerooms of, of kids kind of traveling together all day, and some groups do travel, spend the majority of their day together, that they kind of fight like brothers and sisters and, and kind of, you know, familiarity. So I, I do think that...
Not on middle schoolers.
No. So I, I think that, I mean, I think that your, your point, the point that was made by a parent earlier is, is very valid, that some, you know, inclusion is great and some students do require specialized instruction outside of that setting. And I think that, again, the team makes that decision, and then we are, are responsible for fulfilling that. Our hope is, is right now, they have an academic support that is, is kind of there. We're, we're looking at learning centers and having really targeted, direct specialized instruction for students who need it based on what their, their goals are.
So another important part of the middle school is adult collaboration? So is there common planning time from the, we've talked a lot about the student experience, but there's some common planning time for teams?
There will absolutely be common planning time for teams.
Beam exists as a pull-out?
Mm-hmm.
And so that, again, a pull-out still exists. The music lesson, I've been getting a lot of, some emails on. We said potentially, you have three music teachers, but adding in some additional teacher time to possibly do some lessons in six as a transition. We also even talked possibly about flexing some teacher time because we have, in our current bus proposal, we have a late bus three days a week. Is that correct? So there could be a block of time from two to three, possibly where maybe something like an instrumental lesson. I hate to build a schedule around an instrumental lesson because it's honestly not something that we can offer everybody, and we don't have individual art lessons. And again, I think it's a great thing to do, mind you, but it's tough to, we have a tight schedule already. But I, I sort of like the need. By separating out band as a class, your numbers may go up, and that means you're going to have students of a wider level of ability in those groups. So again, I think if you have more select performing groups, those select performing groups could potentially meet...
After school.
After school. So jazz band, what's, what's the band now? The symphonic?
Symphony band.
Symphonic, and then isn't there a house, Mr....
House band.
Mr. Mullin has a house band or something like that, so that could...
Dr. Conde just said... The more kids we get into a band program too, we would be able to offer maybe more than one section of band for a grade level. So within one grade level, you could have kind of two different band groups.
So with, more kids are going to be taking music. The learning spaces now, I'm sort of thinking about classroom spaces. We have essentially one music room, and then Mr. Middleton said we need to equip potentially... We have essentially one music room, and then Mr. Middleton said we need to equip potentially another music room.
So we have one general music room, or one room that general music is taught in. We have one room that's band and lessons, quite large room that, that lessons are taking place in the performance group, and then we have the stage area. So we potentially have three spaces for the music program.
But we would have two general music classes meeting concurrently?
In some places.
In some places, so we probably need to talk about, there may be some supplies and materials that we need to equip a, a, a second space. So I just want to stress again, there's no ideal schedule.
Missed this.
There's not.
They're going to build it.
So, and again, it's going to be trying to create the sort of most robust programming in the amount of time and staff and space that we have. And we have, I think, a very talented staff, I think we have a very robust program, and so we're trying to fit it in. And this is going to honestly come down to some minutes that we're going to have to count. I know that sounds silly, but I think we obviously have to do a time and learning check, we'll do the time and learning check. But I just want to make sure the committee goes back to guiding principles. Mrs. Monaco, I think what, the way you're speaking, it sounds like you would like to have them consider adding the guiding principle?
Yes.
Is that what I'm saying? I don't think we can answer you specifically what it would look like, but I think if we could construct, or maybe talk about adding a guiding principle for students with pull-outs, and the other suggestion I'd like to make in maybe the next week or so, is to build a schedule two ways, Josh, and I'm looking at you because you might do it, is build it from a student's perspective, so if you could give me what a day or a week would look like, or a six-day rotation, or even a 10-day block of time for a grade six student, a grade seven student, a grade eight student. You can give me a core teacher, an allied arts teacher, I don't even care what the subject is, maybe it's some of the different grades. And then you can customize some students, because I think some parents are going to want to look at, what does this mean for my, my kid? And if they could say, okay, I have a kid who's decent at math, or decent at band, and we can maybe have some samples out there as to what the, what the day is actually going to look like. I have a child who needs pull-out services, where is that going to happen, what does that look like? Because at some point, it's going to be, what do you take out? Again, we all look great at adding, but at some point, we don't want the kids in school till four o'clock, or maybe some people do, but I'm just saying, I think we...
You extend us 54 minutes?
The kids are back there, you won't ask them.
Yeah, they'll, they'll stay. They'll be latent till, they'll be latent till four, I, I get that, and some of the programming. And the one other thing I'd say is, going from some 25-minute blocks on the Tuesdays that you're having now, to a consistent 53-minute block, the intention isn't to just do a 25-minute lesson twice, right? So some of what you're talking here is actually going to more project-based learning, more active learning, more predictable lesson planning. So I think the expectation is, once the structure's in place, then some of the, the, the expectations, or, or what your teachers are telling you, sort of what they're dying to do, that they would have more opportunity to exhibit in their classes. Is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but...
No, I think, I, I think that that's exactly what is, we, in, in order to expect that, we needed to have a structure to support that, and without a structure to support that, it's really hard to expect it. So over time, that's where we, we would like to move to, is, is provide that time. And teams would still have time to be flexible with that, so that if there was an interdisciplinary project, they're all on team at the same time, that they could work together, and, you know, vix kids and, and do different things. So, so some of the, the benefits of the current schedule would continue to exist in, in the flexibility.
Yeah, and the way middle school programming is, I would have a little bit of trouble, again, I'd have to see it, but having students say, I don't want to do a foreign language, I want to do something else, or making some of those choices, because I, I just think they don't necessarily have exposure to it yet, and I think middle school...
Just music and art.
Just music and art, but I'm saying, I just think we, I, I think we would, there's some benefit to having students struggle with some art, and struggle with some music, and to, and to have those experiences, because I think you can learn as much from a no as a yes, and I think kids have to learn some resilience in, as well. And I think you have to learn that through not being successful sometimes. So in a, certainly in a safe and healthy way, I have to say that, get in trouble, right? So, so again, Mrs. Ma, I, I think this is a, this is a very, scheduling is simple in one sense, but it's very complex in another, and that's expression of values. And I think that's why those principles are so important. And if you, I would ask you just to spend some time on those principles, again, if you could maybe add one about the pull-out, because if the committee changes their mind on a principle, or doesn't want to support a principle, that's going to have then a ripple effect on the decisions that folks can make here. If you don't care about the length of lunch, we can grab another...
It should be a full hour.
Right, so again, we can have lunch be an hour, we can have, we can have sunny every day, we can have, we can do a lot of that stuff, but I just, at, at some point, it's, it's going to require some, some choices. And then I just want, again, we've focused a lot on the student part of this, but I do want to make sure that we're also talking about some of the, the teacher experiences as well. And I think, I think the existing schedule has some positives in it, it's not all negative, but I think some of the positives are the, the adult, the team time that, that has been allowed, and that we can have some consistency towards, and I think that's an important part of, an important part of that, that middle school and those relationships that are, that are developed. So I haven't talked to many parents who said, oh, please keep the current schedule either. So I just think we, we're, we're going to need to make some changes. I do think the commitment should be that we're not going to keep, if we make a change, it's, we're not saying it's, you know, it's going to concrete and not change for, you know, decades. I think we're going to have to study it and look at it, and there are going to be some limitations to it, I guess I don't have to say that. I appreciate that you tried to stay within your staffing levels, because having just gone through the budget process, there was really no room for any additional staffing needs. But again, if there's a guiding principle that makes the schedule work better for all kids, that drives the need for a position, then I'm saying, then I think the, we're defining the need, and then we can then advocate for that position as a result. So I mean, I think that would be something that we can hope for.
So one thing that came up between this, both sides of this conversation was the way that it's currently, the, the special ed pull-outs are currently being done, I don't think is the right way. And so I'm hopeful that as you work into this new schedule, you will find a way that doesn't take kids that need pull-outs, special ed, out of subjects they might otherwise enjoy. So, but I, I do want to give people a chance in the auditorium, so that, I know there are people in the back, do you want to speak on this? So who, it just, you could pull up a chair, you don't have to move. You guys can just pull up a chair and are as many as you want, and say what you want Just introduce yourselves as you go along, and... We've been very patient, sitting through our meeting.
My name is Megan DeBoitek, I'm co-president of the Burlington CPAC.
I'm Amy Johnson, I'm the secretary and treasurer for Burlington CPAC.
I'm Beth Colburn, I'm the membership chair for the Burlington CPAC.
And I'm Elizabeth Mallow, I'm also co-president of the Burlington CPAC.
So the Burlington CPAC, for anyone who doesn't know, is the Special Education, is the Parent Advisory Council. Is that right?
Yes.
Right? Used to be Burlington, it used to be just the PAC, but now they've sort of changed the name a little bit to be like other communities, and it's taken me a little while to get used to it, but go ahead.
I guess it falls on me. So I mean, I think, I think the committee got a letter from the CPAC, as well as the administration at the middle school. And I think we are in works and kind of sitting down together as a group, and kind of talking through what our concerns are. Primarily, you know, I think you, Christine, you hit it, it's, it's related to making sure that our special ed kids are not having, you know, not missing out on extracurriculars to receive services. And I, I know that choices have to be made at some, at some points, and I have a child who does, you know, receives services during, you know, developmental reading instead of foreign language, and that was a decision we had to make. Not necessarily a great one, and I guess, you know, just because we've had to do it, I'm not sure that that's what we should be doing, I suppose. So I guess I look at like aspiring to the best kind of model, and, you know, I want to say, you know, I do want to say I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, because I know a lot of work went into this. I saw, I went through, I think, 25 slides, pretty diligently at home, and I saw how much work went into it. I think, from our perspective, I think we want to put ourselves out there as a resource, and make sure that when things like this come up, that we are thought about as like a group of parents that are willing to kind of put our two cents in. I think it's easy for us to come in at the tail end, and kind of, ooh, you didn't do this, you didn't, you know, but I don't think we, and I think we're trying to appreciate the work that went into that, and not be, you know, kind of like tearing it apart, I suppose. And so I think there, there is opportunity, and I think there is, there are going to have to be some difficult decisions. I think where we stand, as many of us on this group, or the active parents in the CPAC, I think that we feel like we'll advocate strongly for our children. I think we're a little concerned, and part of our role as CPAC is to advocate for all children in district. And so I think one of our challenges is educating parents to know what is and isn't permissible, or what they can ask for, and, you know, making sure that that's, but also asking the district to really consider that. And I think, you know, we have a plan to kind of sit down. Did I cover everything? I'm sure I didn't.
There's a couple of things. I think the concern is that there should be some sort of intervention or flex study hall. I know you're objective to shortening the time that you have now, but if your children are going to miss out on foreign language, or art, or music, then you start running into walking a very fine line of violating their faith and IDA, and then you'll end up with OCR complaints, and nobody here wants that. Nobody wants it for their kids, nobody wants it for the district, because it just creates problems. But if the children aren't able to access the same curriculum that all the other kids are able to access, that's going to be a problem for a lot of parents. We've already fielded complaints from parents in general, I mean, the current schedule is pretty atrocious. It's very all over the place, it's not conducive to efficient learning. So I'm glad, and we're very thankful that it has been redeveloped, but I think you really need to consider putting in that flex spot, because I have a student who is requiring eight or nine pull-outs a week over the five-day schedule, and moving to a six-day model, you're going to have to redo every single child in the middle school's IEP 504, including out of district placements, to accommodate a six-day schedule. That's a huge undertaking, and you've only got one team chair. So how is that going to work with the six-day model that you're proposing? It's not a bad idea, it's just, when it comes to special education, that presents a pretty big problem. So I guess it's trying to fine-tune the things and figure out, you know, what isn't, isn't going to work as far as all the students' needs, not just the majority of students' needs, and finding that happy balance. But I just don't think the current schedule proposed is really going to do that without affecting their ability to access the full curriculum.
Can I interject here that it might be a good idea for all of you to have a meeting about this in the near future?
Yeah.
And discuss these details, and, you know, before you actually finalize everything?
I, I responded and asked for times and dates, and we'll be...
Great, that's all.
Yeah, we're getting together now.
As parents of kids with special needs, I think one thing we want to have in general is to know that when you're making any change like this, this is a huge change, when you're making small changes, that you're thinking about students of kids with special, that kids on IEPs, how will this affect them? Even seeing this presentation, my son's in kindergarten, I'm not here, I don't want to be here yet, but I'm thinking, I didn't see anything saying, oh, we talked to special ed teachers, we talked to the director, not saying you didn't, but I want to know that it got thought of in the early side, not in the, in the back end.
So, and, and I appreciate that, and I, you know, two things that I'd like to say is, one is that families, so I, I don't want it to, to appear that we, we excluded the CPAC in terms of, of getting feedback. Certainly, you know, could have involved and, and reached out sooner, and I apologize for that, but our first presentation to families really, except for our, our school council, was, I think, two weeks ago. So in terms of, of the educators, and, and the folks who have been working on this, in terms of, we're special educators, a number of special educators were included in our faculty advisory committee, and there have been parallel conversations going around, alongside, around programming for, for students. So I'm looking at establishing an autism program, looking at kind of redefining our language-based program to be a true inclusive, language-based program. So there have been many conversations over the course of the year. I would say parallel conversations to the schedule conversations. So your, your students, your, I mean, I, I think of all children, and I don't necessarily think, oh, you know, special ed and this, that, that is a priority. I think it's our responsibility to meet the needs of all students. So please know, and as you get to know me, that those, those pieces are always in the conversation, even if it's not explicitly stated, that's always the piece. I will also say that as we start the, the scheduling process, because even though this hasn't been approved yet, we've started scheduling, because we're, we're a little bit behind, we're actually looking at students on IEPs first, which has not been done in the past before. So that we are really looking at making sure that their needs are met through the schedule, and through the grouping practices, before we kind of, you know, schedule the rest of the students. So I look forward to, to finding a time where we can all sit down and happy, I know that people work and that stuff, happy to, to kind of, you know, make it later in the day too, so.
One thing to say, I think that, you know, listening to your presentation, you guys addressed consistency a lot, addressing inconsistency a lot. And I think that students on IEPs with social emotional issues, autism, whatever the, the issue may be, need consistent access to their peers in unstructured social times, and taking them out of these opportunities in art and music, where they can collaborate with children that are in their local community, and build social capital with people that they will be growing with throughout high school, and even in junior high, is incredibly important, and I think that that really needs to be focused upon.
So I trust that you will have a meeting, work all this out, I'm sure you, you're, you've given it a lot of thought already, and you have been trying to figure out what to do with the, the issues around all of this, it's a huge problem. So I'd like to thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience, or anywhere, who wants to speak? John? Go ahead.
Thank you back there. So on, on ways and means, we spend a lot of time looking for problems, so it, it's not often that, I'm speaking as a parent now, that, that we get to say something good. So I wanted to take that opportunity. I had a couple of children go to middle school a number of years ago, and my first reaction to this, in looking at what you've done, the simplest way to determine if something seems like good plan is you look at it and say, of course, that looks so obvious, it's, you know, why haven't we done that all along? That, that was absolutely my reaction to what, what you presented. Having the consistency, having the blocks all be a reasonable length is huge in my mind. I, from an educator's point of view, I can't imagine how you would ever build a lesson plan working with that old schedule. So even, even if the times were shorter, the quality of the times are so much more significant that I think we would come out ahead, and, and as you indicated, it looks like the, the instruction time is actually the same. Doing all that and keeping the staffing levels consistent is remarkable. Having music be in a standard block, I think is a great idea. I think having the, you know, the, the reporting being reduced slightly, I think is a fine change, it's still plenty of reporting that's going on. The consistency of every day being the same just makes so much sense to me. And I, my, while I'm not as familiar with the, the IEPs and special ed, my suspicion is, the consistency in the plan and the size of the blocks will make it vastly easier to work, work the IEPs into a schedule, as opposed to trying to fit it into what I can only describe as the current Cockamamie schedule. You know, I, I, I just can't see how that wouldn't be easier relative to what you must be going through now, trying to fit it into these no-two-things-to-same schedules. trying to fit it into these no-two-things-to-same schedule between teams or day-to-day or class-to-class. So it seems like the opportunity is certainly there, that it should be, it should be easier in theory. And I would also encourage you on the math level idea, I think, was great. You know, I think for those students that are operating at a more advanced level, the current math curriculum really causes them to tread water a fair amount. So I think the idea, the opportunity for those that want to, to combine the seventh, eighth grade and have that effectively extra year put in is a great idea. So I think you've done a fabulous job.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
I'm totally a student, not a parent.
It's okay. Come on up and grab a microphone.
I came to this meeting with the purpose for like Boy Scouts. I need to get a few merit badges out and I need to observe a school committee meeting or some meeting of sorts.
You picked a good one. Is it totally fascinating?
It's fascinating, but like kind of lengthy. So I didn't expect myself to actually like talk in any of this. I thought I was going to observe. But then seeing, since I am a student currently and I was actually in the middle school like three years ago. And then also I run to Fox Hill Elementary School, so I like, and even though I haven't like talked to like the new principals in either school since I went, when they were the previous principals, I think it's really cool that they're trying to introduce a new schedule and like a new way of learning. Because I have a cousin who actually is in Fox Hill. She's a first grader. Isabel from Lozaro. And this would impact her and the future, like since you have a child in kindergarten, that would impact them. And I like the idea of figuring out long-term answers rather than short-term answers. That would work for now and then create bigger problems later. Because I feel that not only in this like world, but like in all other communities, that's what most people try to think of, get it solved now and then worry about what happens later rather than worry about what happens later and then try to get to that. So I think that's really important. Now, I remember actually in middle school, we would always be rushed since like in between classes, we don't have to hurry because like you said, there are no designated times.
You just need to do like a starter thing.
Yeah. And then like I remember there'd be like locker times, like designated like five-minute locker times. And then be like, it was like you got it going. And they would always remind us saying like in high school, you wouldn't really have this. I was like, "That's true" because I'm in high school. I just go to, I just have a bag with me all the time. I believe it's actually easier and everything's on my iPad, so I don't have to carry too much. So I think that essentially when it comes to like, I was in beam. I was in D Block Math. I like, I guess now I'm thinking about it, I would always miss a certain day every week. So I'd probably miss like one long, like I probably never get like long signs ever in that year, probably, I remember. But that probably happened. And then, so it's cool that like now with the blocks rotating, kind of like my high school schedules blocks, you'd be able to get that experience. And like, I remember always, I'm pretty sure I remember this, I don't exactly remember it, but I remember in the morning, like if I had like a certain class I didn't really like, like I'd be like, "Oh, I have to deal with this" like every morning. Or like especially if it was like a Monday morning, it'd be like the worst. But like with this, it would be like easier because then you get to see that different personality. Like my teachers comment, like in high school, they're like, "Oh, this isn't your morning, right?" Like, or like, "I wish I had you in the afternoon. You're more active." And then I think like not to like give a solution or present a solution for you guys. I think maybe if you had like a single like, like non-rotating block and you just had your children like go doing that block, so every day they would miss like something different that they would need to, and not like trying to like solve all your problems. But it's just like an idea I was thinking of. Because if they don't, if your guys don't move, you would miss everything equally in theory. Like all of this is in theory because like, like people were presenting, like snow days happen. Everything happens. My dad actually works like in the school system, so I get like a little bit of an insider point of view. So it's crazy to see how like, even though like I didn't even think about like the teacher's side or like the students, because I'm a student, I don't think about like, well, like the parents weighing in and like how their own children have different issues. Like I remember in English, I would have to deal with, well, not like deal with, like that's a poor choice of words. I would have another student in my class who was like in your program or like special needs. And then we would have the teacher's assistant in there. And like they would do their part or like, and like try to help them out, but also try to help out the whole class. Because like with classes, like even though there's one teacher, like if you do like group work, the teacher has to like bounce around. So if there's even a teacher assistant who's mostly like for the special needs kids, I would still help it and help the other groups and like kind of help the teacher. So I think that's like a cool, like, where was I going with this? With the special needs kids and the relationship with that, it was like cool to see how even though they were, they were still, even though they had the help, they were still able to have a normal student life for the most part. And like, I remember my friends, I was like, "Oh, why am I in this class?" And then, "Oh, I was in this little room, like the help room." And I was like, I was like right next to like one of my English classes. So I'd always see them and like wait for them in the halls. And like they would just like be doing whatever they need to do and then, like, yeah, so.
So you burned your badge, so. Thank you for your contributions.
Yeah. And Diana, did you want to say something?
Just quickly.
Then we're going to wrap this up.
I'm going to keep it short.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to address one or two items. One is, I, as the union president, have been getting a lot of concern just about the speed at which this has been put together. I understand that the schedule's not changed for a very long time and that there's a desire to, and that there's a displeasure with the old schedule. But I think one of the concerns that I'm hearing isn't so much that they don't, that members are, don't believe that a good schedule was put together, but rather that they're unsure of what's coming up, of what it is. But primarily, I just want to come as representative of my members to address concerns around foreign language, around world language. And that is simply while it's understood that the minutes will be the same or actually greater, the concern is that by not having a class every day, that, this is especially where you're looking at sixth grade where it's two out of every six, that you don't get that consistent practice. Yes, you're getting enough minutes and that's wonderful. But the concern is that, you know, from Monday to Thursday in a beginning language, there's, can be difficult to carry it over. And so the request has been from world language teachers to perhaps take another look at this and see if there is some way to create a more frequent meeting. So I'd just like to put that, put that out there. I know that some districts have more meetings, more time, some have fewer. We just want to make sure that when our students head up here from the middle school to the high school, they're ready to engage in that Level Two of their language. And that is, I think, the primary concern is that whether or not the way in which it is laid out will give students an opportunity to get the kind of proficiency that allows them to move on to high school and further in a second language.
Thank you. Ms. Purchase and Mr. Murphy, I want to personally thank you for being so willing to work so hard on this and to listen tonight to everybody. You know, you did an awesome presentation and then there are various ones of us that have special interests and issues and it was, it was very, it was very good of you to be so willing to listen to everything, meet with the special ed parents and take it all into consideration as you move forward on this. And I know that you're in a short timeframe because you have to get ready for next year. So we really do appreciate all the work you're doing on this and especially the listening part.
That's what we're here for. This was not, again, nothing that we wanted to kind of go forward. I do feel strongly, yes, it's a short timeframe. I do think that the process was a thorough process though and we'll continue to work together. And even if and when this, you know, is kind of passed, hopefully, that doesn't mean that it's going to be in place for the next forty-six years. I think that at that point in time, we will continue.
That was the last schedule.
That we will, we will each year look at it and determine what's working and what's not and make those adjustments. So I think that this is going to be an ongoing process. So thank you.
Thank you very much for all of your work.
No, thank you.
Carrie and Josh, the students today, I think, were outstanding too. What great accomplishments.
Innovation Pathways Grant, Dr. Conkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Patrick for the Innovation Pathways Grant conversation.
I believe Dr. Conkey received a letter last week, at the end of the week, notifying us that we received a $50,000 Innovation Pathways Grant for the 2019-2020 school year. And the letter came from our commissioner, Jeff Riley. He said, "We are confident that your district's new innovation pathway will offer students a transformative experience, enabling them to develop essential skills, gain awareness of future career opportunities, and make more informed choices about co-secondary education in promising fields." So prior to this year, there were sixteen districts that had Innovation Pathways Grants. I'm not sure of the number added this year, but again, we're a very small number of districts in the state that have received this. And really just want to mention Shereen Tavrell's work in this area, connecting us with partners to make this grant a possibility. And certainly, I know Mr. Wong at the high school, and I don't want to leave anybody out. It's been, again, led by Shereen, but a lot of people have contributed to this, so.
So the point of tonight was just to announce that the school committee will share the letter with you. We'd like to bring the team in to discuss the Innovation Pathways. It's actually, it's a very significant accomplishment. We're one of a few districts to do this. Our area of focus is in computer science. And it just takes a tremendous amount of effort to coordinate not only the classroom learning piece, but there's always, there's an internship and an outside learning piece and coupling this with the internships that are currently happening. So there's a lot of exciting things happening with the Innovation Pathways program. And it's, I think what the state is ultimately going to do is try to model some of these successful pathways and then replicate and expand them across the state. So it's sort of our opportunity to do that. I know Mark and the high school are also working on some scheduling changes. And so I know how much you enjoy these scheduling conversations. But I think Mark at some point would, probably should come in and tell you about sort of what he's thinking about and some of the changes that he's working on with his faculty, like Carrie and Josh have worked on with their faculty and staff. So I think that will happen. So again, tonight was just meant to be the announcement. We'll share the letter. But we'd love to have the people who did all the work associated with this. And again, it was outstanding work and it was a, it's quite an honor. And again, Shereen led the effort. She's our computer science teacher here at the high school.
Any comments in the committee? Yeah, congratulations. And the next item?
New Victory Garden Manager. I think we included a letter in your packet. And there was a request at the end of the letter that Dr. McKennitt sent to you. Again, I didn't think there would be a problem, but she wanted to explore the opportunity to expand the garden by planting some fruit trees. And she asked permission to bring up a proposal to the school committee. And again, I didn't see, we're sort of, once we get through the budget time, again, I was going to share and add her to the agenda so she could present a fruit tree proposal to the committee.
No nuts, just fruit.
So we can do that.
They're all sitting behind the table. That sounds good. Any comments? Any discussion? That's fine. So the schedule?
Sharon put together some dates. She looked through a lot of everyone's calendars and she's proposing July 23rd and August 20th.
Seven, twenty-three, and eight-twenty?
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody okay with that? Yeah? Okay.
So Sharon will have those as proposed dates.
Old business? Anyone have any old business? Nope. New business? Financial update?
Financial update. It was all emailed to you, Sharon. You have some paper copies over there for the folks who need it. Ms. Kasha is at the State Business Managers Conference, which is in, I think it's in Hyannis, right now. So I will do the update. Then Ways and Means, you received this yesterday, I think. The days are going together. Monday is, I think, when you received it. Today's Tuesday, so that makes sense. So again, the format you're very familiar with. The first two pages are the operating budget, encumbered and remaining. And then page three is the accommodated budget, same format, spent, encumbered, and remaining. And then the important pages to me are actually the last three, which are the projected budget, operating, and projected budget accommodated. So if you turn to page five, again, which is, I honestly start at page five when I look at these reports, the, in the projected budget, given sort of where we are and where we need to get to, Nicole's projecting about $100,000 balance at this point in the year. Again, Ms. Aragon, I know you're going to ask me, "Am I comfortable with that?" As I said, no, I'm not going to be comfortable until the middle to end of July, so when it closes out. But better, positive than negative. And so I think that's where we're tracking. On the accommodated account, again, on page six, we're, again, our position is still positive. And again, that could change at any time, given it's the accommodated account. But we're still projecting that we will finish the fiscal year to the positive. I know sometimes looking at isolation, $100,000 can seem like a lot, but given the size of our budget, it's not. So again, I hope as we, as we bring this along, I think there were some feedback from Ways and Means when this was emailed to you and from the school committee about making sure that we are more predictable and regular. Our intentions are to do, and our commitment are to do, monthly financial updates. And I think the suggestion was made, which I believe is a good one, that we are going to honor moving forward, is to decouple the creation of these reports from the school committee's schedule. So again, what we are going to propose moving forward, and again, Nicole and I had an email communication about this, was we're going to, at the end of the month, look at the week following the end of the month, if I'm saying that right, the first week of the month. So after a month ends, that first week, producing a financial report like this and then not worry about when we have the school committee. We'll just distribute that. And then we can put the financial report either on the first agenda or the second agenda, but people have the information at the same time each month. So I'd like some flexibility in terms of the meeting that month, just because something may come up. We may get late into agenda or something like that, but people will have the information. And obviously, if there's an issue, it would be a priority on the, on the agenda. So that would be my commitment to both Ways and Means and to the committee.
Questions?
So I just want to clarify. So that first week will be emailed, these financial reports, and Ways and Means subcommittee will also be emailed at the same time?
Yep.
Okay. And then it will appear if we need to discuss something that will happen at a meeting. But as an agenda item, FY19 financial update, we won't necessarily see it.
No, it'll be in every, every month, it will be on the agenda, right Eric?
No, well, no, I'm shifting this slightly. So I think what we, the commitment we made, which we, which we have to do a better job of keeping is we said the second meeting of every month, we would have this information. We were trying to get it done, so it was the most up-to-date for that meeting. The challenge is there are some months where we only have one meeting and so, and then some months when if we're trying to get through budget hearings or we have a special school committee meeting, I think, so having it attached to the school committee meeting, I think, was just causing some confusion. So people will get the report that first week of the month, every month. Again, I think that we can either put it on... on that first agenda, which is typically the second week of the month, or the second agenda. It'll be discussed that month. All I'm saying is, I'd like some flexibility as to the first or the second. It may not be on every agenda. November, we typically have one meeting. Obviously, it will be on the agenda for that one meeting in November. So what we're trying to say is, you should sort of expect it, that first week of the month, after the month closes out. I'm not sure whether it'd be on the, I'm not going to commit to the day, because it all depends when, what day, the week, the month ends, but it would be sort of the week following. We rarely, if ever, have a school committee meeting in that first week anyway, so it'll just be, again, decoupled from the meeting. Is, I hope I said that well, but I think that's what I'm trying to do.
Thank you.
So we'll go from there.
Other questions? Tom, you have anything? Ways and Means? John?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Conkey. That's great. And that's exactly what we'd like to see, is that, you know, it comes with, in a week of when the month ends, and we discuss it, you know, as soon as we can at a school committee meeting. That's great. Just, I want to just touch on two particulars in the current report. So I'm just comparing it to the March 5 report, which is the last one we have. And so just to summarize, I think there's essentially only two significant changes. In the operating budget, the reduction in surplus by 20K is pretty much completely explained by the custodian vacation leave. And, you know, I can imagine how that could change over time. In the accommodated budget, it's, the change from last time is actually an increase of about 70K in the surplus, and that seems to be pretty much entirely explained by the tuition line item going up by, you know, a little more than 10%, I guess. So I, or about 10%. So I was just curious about the tuition line item. It, not knowing exactly how it works, I would have imagined that, you know, once people are in, that tuition would be fairly predictable. So I'm just curious how that went up by 70K since March.
I don't know the specific situation, but a placement could change to a less restrictive environment, maybe a change in placement, maybe a change in tuition price. It could be that a student turned 22 and maybe aged out of services. It could be that we consolidated something. So again, it could be a change in individual service or tuition cost. So again, I don't know what this particular situation is. I'm not even sure if I did, I wouldn't say, but I think it could be a bunch of different options.
Okay, but that makes sense to you, that that could happen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else on the financial report? Eileen, does anyone want to come up?
Good evening. I'm Lisa Clark, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. So I don't come here just for the numbers. I do learn a lot. This was very good. It was long, but it was good.
It happens.
Yeah. So that's a great idea, to have its own calendar. Super. So how does, how does the public get to see the financials? You pass them to Ways and Means and your own group, but then, I mean, do we wait until whatever the meeting is, that they're discussed publicly? And then do we sort of nag people to, you know, we don't want to be emailing folks to do it. What's the best?
Honestly, it's really, once it's done, it's really up to the school committee. So we can, I think we can post. It's really a public document when we meet and discuss it, so it becomes public at that point. Again, Ways and Means has a suggestion.
If I have a preference, and, you know, read through these things, and I just got this one, I would prefer that when they are on our agenda, so that we've had a chance to look at them and digest them. And if there's anything that you want to bring to our attention about them, you have the opportunity to do that. I'd prefer it was on our agenda, then it's posted. And with an agenda, Patrick can put it on the website or whatever, like whatever we do, anything else that we present at a meeting. But I would, I would prefer to do it that way, rather than if it goes out, if it goes out as soon as you issue it to Ways and Means, and there's something there that we even hadn't had a look at yet, and I'm getting phone calls about it.
Yeah, wait, it's discussed.
I just, for the sake of an extra day or two or a week, depending on the timing of it, I don't see where it's that big of a deal. But I just think we should have the opportunity as a group to have looked at it and discussed it to the degree that might be necessary. So far, other than, I question here or there, there's really not a lot to talk about typically anyway, but I would, I just think we should have had a chance to look at it before we vote.
To that end, I would request that you put it on the first agenda whenever possible. Go ahead, Kristin.
I was going to echo what Mr. Murphy said, just based on the, for example, I forget which meeting it was, there was that transportation cost of upwards of almost $100,000 that hit. That was kind of shocking. And to have the business office fielding those emails immediately before, I honestly don't get to look at it sometimes the same day I get it, before that we've had that. And then to have that discussion of follow-up, is this something we need to be concerned with? Or just to give the business office some preparation before they are publicly answering a lot of questions. And because there is, there can be those swings. If it's, you know, minor, it's not a big deal. But those months, we do have such a swing, I would defer to what Mr. Murphy said. But having it on that first agenda, so you're not waiting, you know.
And again, I just want to stress again, we're decoupling from, I want to say first or second agenda. We're saying the first week of the month, we'll have the numbers to the committees. And then when it's on the agenda, it'll be public information at that point. Sharon, you typically send the agenda out to almost everybody.
Come meeting.
So everyone will get the agenda at that point, and then we can distribute and sort of get the information out after it's on the agenda. Is that what I'm hearing?
That would be my preference. So.
And I would just say, you know, when you can, try to aim for the first agenda, so that people have the opportunity to see the numbers if they can.
I'm absolutely hearing you. I'm just trying to say.
Yeah, I know. You want to keep your options open.
We're going to have a separate schedule, and I understand that.
On the other hand, maybe we shouldn't post them. We should just ask everyone to come to the meeting.
No, I think we can.
People talking about other agenda items. It's nice.
Let's see how it works. And again, I'm certainly open to feedback. So if you're, again, obviously, if you want to see a change, you're welcome to come in and speak to the committee, and I'll do what I can.
Reviewing is always good. So just to be clear, so then it will be posted on the website the night of the meeting, where it's going to be discussed?
Yeah. I think we'll try to get everything up and ready.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So is that it? Any other questions on the financial report?
I just, I don't know if we've said it yet, but we refer to Town Meeting approved that last evening. I just want to thank Ways and Means for all of their assistance and their oversight, and I want to thank Town Meeting members for, once again, being generous to the students of the town.
Thank you all the time and energy. Yes, so possibly. We've had our budget approved and one Warren article, and we're hopeful to
Get the rest down?
Remaining Warren articles approved in the next meeting.
Patrick put together a nice video. We just didn't have the time to show it. It wasn't, we got derailed a little bit during the presentation, but when we get through Town Meeting, we discussed sending it out with a thank you to Town Meeting members. Just give them a sort of a brief glimpse of some of the accomplishments of the district this year. So we'll do that, certainly include you in that. But again, I share Mr. Murphy's appreciation and gratitude for that.
Five minutes, three minutes. I just wonder if he might not want to still present it at Town Meeting? No?
How long is that? It's Town Meeting?
Four minutes.
No, I, again, I think.
All right.
And we're looking at Monday night now, too.
Yes, okay, end of story.
I just think we want to.
Thank you, Town Meeting members. We appreciate your help, your support, your money. The next item is elementary student report cards.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Again, we've discussed this many times. Currently, elementary student report cards are distributed three times per school year, and there's one parent conference held in the fall. We're recommending that this be changed to two report cards. That would be mid-year and end of year, and have the opportunity for two parent conferences, fall and spring. Parent conferences would be held in November and March. And again, the report cards would be issued in January and June, and the proposed change would be effective for the 2019-2020 school year. Mrs. Monaco, you said you're interested in hearing from teachers and parents, and so Patrick reached out to teachers and parents with a survey, I guess, or a Google form. And so.
How many responded?
We got 319 responses. So there were 242 parents and 77 teachers. And out of that total, 83% supported the change, closer to 84%. But with a caveat, because a lot of the teachers and a few of the parents responded that it was difficult to really give all-in without knowing what the format of that second conference day would be. There was some concern about that, how that would be structured. So that's something we're going to have to plan and have discussions about if we make that change.
Is this an item you want voted on?
Yeah, I'd like to get the principals involved and sort of have them think about how to, how to schedule it. I think we had knocked around some different ideas. I think whether the second conference is optional or required was an idea. There are many teachers already giving a second conference in the spring. And we talked about maybe having an evening, we have some contractual hours available, and maybe having some of the time scheduled in the evening for the parents who can't make the conferences during the day in the fall. So I think we have some options. I just wanted to have principals, again, go through their leadership teams and put some structure to it. But I just wanted to move forward with the two and two.
Tom?
To get it on the table, I'll make a motion that the school committee approve the suggested elementary student report card change as described by the superintendent.
Second, sorry. Okay, is there any discussion?
I, I'm going to support it. Patrick's report just influenced me to a certain degree. It's, I mean, I tend to look to administration on these types of things, and they're recommending it, and the amount of people that responded to the survey, that the great majority of those seemed to be okay with it. I'm going to go to support.
Kristin?
I guess, I keep going back and forth with this. I'm one of the proponents that really feel there should be a second conference. I was saddened when that second conference faded away between my first and my youngest. And I guess what concerns me in the way this is written is the opportunity for two parent conferences. If we go down to two report cards, I don't want just to then go back to one conference. The whole point of tailing back the two report cards is really to get that face-to-face opportunity and have that discussion, that fluid discussion, where you're not in an email going back and forth. You, one thing leads to another, and you end up having a more holistic conversation about a child. And you're going into that classroom. There's a lot more dynamics when you're going into that classroom. You tell the child, "I mean, with your teacher today, anything I should know?" The teacher and the parent builds that rapport. It's always easier to have that email after, or that telephone conference after you've had that face-to-face conference with the teacher. So I guess I want more clarity on what opportunity means.
Well, I think you can make more clarity. You're saying you'd like there to be two report cards and two parent conferences?
Yes.
We can't force parents to attend. I guess that's what I meant by the opportunity, is the expectation, though, you would like to say the expectation is that there are two conferences for every parent who wants to have the two conferences.
And they don't have to go soliciting it. So, you know, my experience with other parents have been, well, I don't want to bother the teacher. I said, "No, there's, you can always meet with the teacher, have a second." And, you know, "Oh, well, I'll just email. I don't want to take their time." And so I don't want to fall back on the parent to be the one to be initiating a second conference.
Okay.
If that's clear.
I, it is.
Okay.
Well, I am not going to support this. I'm going to vote no, because I think parents should have as many conferences as they feel that they want or need. And going to two report cards, I simply cannot support going to, I didn't like going to three report cards, and there's no way I'm going to support going to two report cards. Diana?
One of the reasons that many of the teachers have supported the idea of going to two report cards is simply the feeling that having to have that report card ready for that first conference so early, very often, some of the benchmark testing has just been completed. Very often, elementary teachers have barely had a chance to really get to know their students, especially with our current RTI structure. Students don't remain in the same classroom throughout the day, and so you end up seeing your homeroom students perhaps only during science and social studies, and perhaps the morning meeting. I think there was a lot of support for the idea of having that face-to-face, of really being able to have that conversation, especially with a standards-based report card that can be fairly difficult to understand. My concern, and the concern of the association, is how little planning or work around how a second conference would happen. Currently, in the first conference, of course, it's back-to-back with a professional development day. While elementary schools have their parent-teacher conferences, middle school and high school have a professional development day, and then it flips, so students are out. There's a dedicated day. That does not mean that people don't, that teachers don't meet with parents at other times. First of all, as a fifth-grade teacher, I met with a parent anytime they wanted to meet, and very often would reach out to have a conversation with them. The concern here is that there's no plan, there's been no proposal put forward as to how this would be implemented. As a fifth-grade teacher, would I love to have a second conference? Would I love to have that kind of real connection as a partner with parents around their students' education? Absolutely. I think it's actually far more informative than a report card. As a special education teacher, I actually much prefer to be able to actually address in a narrative how students were doing. My concern, however, is we have no idea how this would work out. Is there an expectation, if we're not having an early release day, if we're not having another, you know, backing it up to another professional development day, is the expectation that we will do this for a number of evenings or beforehand? There was a comment made at one point about the fact that there are additional two, you know, two-hour commitment that could be activated in the contract. Clearly, there isn't a real understanding of how long it takes to get through even 18 parents' worth of conferences. Two hours is not going to make it. So now we're starting to talk about multiple evenings. We're, you know, this was very difficult to respond to the survey in anything other than just a philosophical manner. Philosophically, I think it shows that many people feel that going down to two report cards and having that additional contact time arranged with parents is a great idea. But how does one support it if you don't know anything about it, how it's going to happen? I think this was a real cart before the horse, quite frankly. I think that you have to be able to at least put forward one, two, three possibilities as to how it might come out, and then be able to say, "Do you believe in it philosophically?" and then be able to say, do you believe in it philosophically? Is this what you want? Here are some options. Please give feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, just, I guess in response to that, there are some evenings in the contract that I know are not being utilized at different points.
Yeah, and there's more than one, and principals have actually been working on this and talking about options with some of their staff. So I think they're out there. I just, it wasn't real, it didn't make sense to do a whole lot more with this. I think if we're not going to do this, then we need to propose some changes in the calendar because the feedback was we need to move the fall conference later. So I just think that's what we're looking for, is if we'd like to pilot it for a year, get some feedback. Principals continue to work on this with their teachers. And again, as many of the teachers said through their principals and to me directly, they're already having a second conference. And I just think moving to report cards would sort of honor that time that they're doing. And Mrs. Russo, I'm hearing you, you would like it to be more of an expectation than sort of an option. And I just think we need to see what the principals come up with.
So where it says it would be effective 2019 and '20, so you mentioned pilot year.
Mm-hmm.
Could we put something in of that and then make sure that we then have this discussion April again and get the feedback, teachers, parents, or does it make sense just to leave this?
No, I think we could, should do that anyway and see what's happening. And then, I'm not even against the idea of if we can't fit it in or the spring is too busy or we can't put the evenings together, that we talk about adjusting the schedule again mid-year and then, again, next year is a contract year anyway. And maybe we have to talk about the structure of this second conference day or something like that. But I just think we need to, we made this change in kindergarten, so I think it's been effective there. I don't think we've gotten calls from kindergarten. And Mrs. Russo, one of the driving reasons that we're looking at a second conference. So again, if this is not a direction the committee wants to go, then I, we have other changes to make in the calendar. And I understand this has to be real, but I didn't want to, again, I think the principals have been having these conversations and I think they're, they'll bring something to you that is some proposal once the principals, I think, have the idea that they can move forward with this.
So are you confident you want to vote on this? A, the full committee isn't here, and B, it sounds like it really hasn't been fully developed. Are you ready for a vote?
Again, I think it's more fully developed at the building's level. If you want to wait for a full committee, you can do that. I would just sort of, Ben, if you don't want to vote officially, if you say, go ahead, tell everyone this is the direction that we're going to go and you're confident that we can get the vote, then I will have principals develop sort of for March a concrete schedule. And I think they can work, they're grade-level teams to do.
No, if you're really going in that direction, I want my vote recorded. So if you're ready for a vote?
And I have no problem amending the motion to say for, as a pilot, for next year if that would make people feel more comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a good thing and that way if we have to go back to three report cards or the conference comes across as not something that's required or we don't feel like we can fit in a time or, again, there could be lots of different reasons not to change, but I think there's some good reasons to change as well.
Okay, there's no further discussion. We'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor?
No.
I am opposed. It is two to one.
Thank you.
Done? Not unanimous?
Not unanimous.
It happens. Okay.
Administration of medication, first reading. There, the next two are connected and they came through the wellness committee, is that correct, Patrick?
Yeah, then we're at the wellness committee.
And so, Patrick, I'll let you give some background, but I just wanted to make the distinction between C and D. C is a policy and D is the automatic external defibrillator. We needed to make some changes in the procedures and protocols.
I don't have this, where did...
It's on the AM.
Yeah, it wasn't in mine.
Let's go out for it, there's some gaps.
There was some gaps, huh?
And I was relying on your expertise with this.
It's the first reading anyways.
Oh, it's a first reading?
Yeah, the key change in the administering medicine to students, it cut out some language that allowed a school secretary to call a student to the office and remind them to take medicine if the nurse wasn't present. And we cleaned that up and said no one other than the school nurse may give or administer any medication to any student unless the unlicensed staff attended it as the appropriate training course that is required by the DPH. So there's a, there's a training course required by the Department of Public Health to dispense medication and we just let that language potentially cause some problems, so I'll probably clean that up.
Okay, thank you. So we don't need a vote on this because it's a first reading?
Correct.
Okay, next.
It's the automatic external defibrillator procedures and protocols. Again, probably, again, in hindsight, I should have put this under communication, not asking for a vote because it's just a procedure and protocol. But Ms. Conley, through the wellness committee, wanted to make some changes in those procedures. I just wanted to inform the committee what those changes are. Again, the policy is staying the same, so I'm not asking for a vote on that. Ms. Monaco, will make sure you get a copy of the first reading of the...
Yeah, I didn't, I just didn't see it on the electronic agenda. Maybe I should look on my computer instead of my iPad. So is that it? Anything else to come before the committee?
No, ma'am.
No one for the public participation? Boy, Diana, you're going to town, huh?
I wasn't going to speak tonight.
You guys have ruined it for me.
You can come up afterwards, okay?
What?
This lady's in the back.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I didn't realize you guys were coming up again. You, take it.
Diana, it's okay.
Let me make this real short, and that is regarding the conference plans. It sounds as though this has been sent off to the principals and we're looking at various building-based proposals. I am officially, publicly demanding that when whatever is developed and put forth to those buildings, that it is forwarded to the VEA so that we can assess any possible impact. I find it highly unusual that we are going forward with something with so little structure to it and so little information, and I think it's important that we have an opportunity to make sure we do our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't demand often, do I?
No. Mona?
Hi, thank you so much for taking our question. We are both parents of rising third graders at Francis Wyman.
Oh, why am I not surprised?
My name's Courtney.
I'm Kelly Power. I have twins at Francis Wyman and I'd like to say that we've had a wonderful experience so far. We can't speak highly enough about how great the teachers are. Mrs. McDonald, the school itself, has been great. But we're here because we've been recently informed that they will not be adding the additional sixth class for our students next year. And we just have concerns about what that means for our upcoming third graders and their teachers. I feel like they already have a large class as it is with the additional sixth classroom and going down to five and adding more students to that class, we just wonder if they're going to be at a disadvantage compared to their peers in the rest of the community.
This is, next year which grade?
This is third grade.
In the handouts I moved, it's currently there are six sections of second grade and we are modeling five sections at third grade.
So you're going up to 21.
From...
21.2.
There's probably 17, 18 now, I think, in your current?
Yeah, I would say 19 or 20.
I have 20. My daughter's class has 20.
All right. I have usually grade-level numbers. I don't have how they're all distributed through, so there might be a smaller class in there as well. So I have currently 106 projected, probably around 106 second graders projecting 106 third grader for next year.
Now, how can there be a class, do you happen to know if there's a really small class somewhere in the mix?
Not, between us, we, she has a set of twins, so she has two, and then I have a daughter, so there's three, we have three classes.
Represented.
And they're all large.
Yes.
So that would mean three other classes. I'm not quite sure, but I think they're on the same kind of...
Yeah, they sound like they're similar.
Yeah.
Okay, you want to look into that a little?
Yeah, these numbers are from yesterday, so I, we're fairly confident. Again, I don't know how the classes are distributed. It is a large class, so 106, again, Francis Wyman is designed as a five-section school. We did have that sixth K1, 2, and we were trying to absorb it into grade three, similar to the other conversations about prioritizing class sizes in K2. There are 83 rising fourth graders with five sections. Again, we could certainly look at swapping, but given what the, the grade-three parents at Fox Hill and the grade-three parents at Francis Wyman, again, supporting your, arguing the value of smaller class sizes, I think I would like to support that. But we really would, at this point, need to go from 96 classroom teachers at the elementary level, again, homeroom teachers, to 98, with two additional...
Two additional teachers.
Two additional teachers.
What's the physical capacity over there?
Well, they, there's basically one room that's been floating. It's not in a great, it's in a decent location for K2. It's not in a great location for 3.5, but I mean, I think they have one spare space. One of the fifth-grade classrooms isn't very, I'm not even sure if it's a full-size classroom, so we're bumping into, we're bumping into some class space issues at Francis Wyman. As well, if people want to keep classes around 18, then we're going to, you know, we have about 16 classrooms a grade, we can usually, we can find a 17th if needed, but not in multiple grades. So if we ever needed six sections in more than one grade at Francis Wyman, I'm not sure where we would go.
Just the old lady's indication, I think it came in a little bit late. We had this discussion at the beginning of the night with some Fox Hill parents up here.
Yes, we know.
So there was, there was discussion and it's an ongoing issue that we're going to have to keep looking at. And it's a matter of available space and then available people to teach in the classes.
Right, I do understand what you're saying. It just seems though that the rising third graders at Francis Wyman, it is the highest at 106. And also, I think if you look at the grade three at the other three schools, it just doesn't seem equitable to have 49 students with three teachers and then 106 students with five teachers. It seems that, just, looking at the numbers here on paper, it just doesn't seem equitable. And it also, I think, will, we have had a sixth class for the last three years. So I think it will have an impact on our students because also this number, this, I know it's projected and, but what if there are more enrollments in the summertime and then those numbers go up to 23, 24?
That's always a possibility and we've had that happen before, that we've had to go to town meetings in September because of that. So, I mean, it's something I'm sure they're going to have to keep in mind.
I'm a public school teacher of 17 years, so I can attest to the benefits of having small class sizes. I'm not an elementary teacher, but I do understand that third grade is a pivotal year for kids. It's crucial. And I just don't agree with cutting the sixth, sixth, third grade class at this point. I don't know if it's appropriate. We know it's a big year for students, it's an end-cast year. I think that there's a lot of, a lot of kids that are still trying to nail down the benefits of, nail down how to read and all the basic math concepts and in a larger class, what kind of attention are they going to be getting? Especially those struggling students and, you know, we don't want their teachers to be stretched too thin and we feel that our children deserve a high quality of education and just because they happen to be in a grade with a large population of students, we don't want them to be at a disadvantage.
So I would thank you for speaking publicly about this because I think it's important that anyone watching, the Ways and Means Committee, you know, I think in general, it's good to bring awareness to the fact that this is happening. It's happening right now in two schools. Our enrollment's growing. As Dr. Conti mentioned, I guess, last night, we have approximately 130 more students now than we had a year ago throughout the system, but that number, you know, every year we get more kids and the demographics are changing, houses being torn down and built and families are moving in. So we hear you. The superintendent will do everything he can to do the best that he can within the confines of budget and space. And what we determined earlier when we talked with the Fox Hill parents is that over the next few weeks, he would come up with, you know, what he can. That doesn't mean it'll change. We'll see, you know, but we really do get it and we understand that you care a lot and we care a lot too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anything else? We have need for executive session?
No.
No, no need for executive session. If you pull up, I will adjutant motion to adjutant.
Second.
All those in favor? We agree on that, it's three to zero.